Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call the meeting to order and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman, let's please note that it is 7:08.
7:08, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Item number two is fire evacuation. If a fire alarm goes off or any other emergency, you'll exit to my left, to your right, or behind you down the stairs. And please just get as far away from the building as you possibly can. I appreciate that. Sorry for starting a little late tonight, but we're going to do roll call next, number three.
Terrence Lynch. He's absent. And Lynda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alimo.
Here.
Joseph Muley.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Guerrero is absent. Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
Patrick Hooper.
Here.
And Walter Crizell.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. So I heard from attorney, attorney, all right. We just had the executive session. I'm calling Guerrero an attorney. Commissioner Guerrero called earlier this evening and said he wasn't going to be able to make it tonight. So I just wanted to put that on the record for Vinnie. Yep, we got to seat two, right? So we're going to seat both our alternates tonight. Well, what month is it? I got to get my little cheat sheet out of there.
It's Commissioner Hooper's month, right?
Mr. Hooper's month?
Yeah, I think it's me.
And let's see.
Yep.
And then October is Walter Crizell.
So Walter and Mr. Hooper.
Yep.
All right. So we will seat Commissioner Crizell and Commissioner Hooper for this evening. Okay, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just want to announce that I did watch the July 25 meeting that I missed online. So I feel qualified to vote on the minutes, and I also attended the August 26 meetings.
Very good. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve July 25 minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Corrections, amendments? Show of hands, motion approved? Okay, July 25 motions approved unanimously.
Make motion to approve August 26.
Second.
Discussion? Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, show of hands.
Aye.
I abstain.
All, one abstention. Mr. Crizell. Do we have a town attorney report right here?
Mr. Chairman, you have one that was revised since your packet.
So the one that's on?
So it should be on the dais this evening. There were many changes to just about, well, there was some changes to just about everything on the docket, so you could read that.
So it's different than the one I'm looking at on my computer?
I don't know, this is the old one.
Right?
That would be correct. This came out September 9th, and you got your packets. And the packets are put up before then.
Okay.
Okay. We'll just take a second, go ahead and review this. Seems to be what's been continuing on for the last year or several months. Anybody have any questions? Questions on Attorney Serrato's report dated September 9th, 2024? Show of hands, motion, we don't accept the town attorney's report. Okay. All right. Number six, zoning enforcement officer. We had him, he's not here. We got anything for us?
Not this evening. Not this evening. We'll try to have something for you at the next meeting.
Okay. Number seven, public participation. At this time, we invite the public to come up with any questions they have for the committee, for staff. Anything that's not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to come up and ask any questions. Is there anybody that would like to do that this evening? See and none, we'll close the public participation. Item number seven. Number eight is a bond release. Bond release, I think we have one.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman.
We have a bond release here that Rick has signed off on. Is there any comments from staff? We have his letter in front of us. It's a 35, $3,050 bond, 210 Moody Road in Enfield.
Yep, that's correct. E and S is complete, and the bond is ready to be released.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for staff, anything on this one? We'll make a, this will be a roll call vote.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to release the erosion and sedimentation bond in the amount of $3,050 regarding application SPR 1908, 210 Moody Road, 13,900 square foot addition to existing building, Topknot LLC owner, applicant, map 100, lot 11, industrial I-1 zone.
Second. Any discussion? Who's second? Oh, we'll give it to Walter.
Give it to Walter.
Who's quick? Any discussion on the bond release? Okay. Give it to a roll call, Mr. Secretary.
All right. Francis Alimo.
I'm four.
Lynda DeGray.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Joseph Muley.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio, or no, I'm sorry, Pat Hooper.
Four.
Walter Crizell.
Four.
And John Petronella's four.
Okay, we'll accept that. Number nine, administrative approvals. Staff, Lori, you got anything?
None this evening.
Not this evening.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Director of Planning report number 10.
I don't have much. Welcome back.
Welcome back.
It's been a good summer, I hope, for everybody. The only thing we have is we need to appoint somebody for the Economic Development Commission from the Planning Commission. So they meet once a month, and I think a lot of times they don't meet. So I don't know if you want to think about it, if anybody wants to volunteer, or.
So is there anyone interested that would like to be on this committee as lays on from planning and zoning? Thank you. Commissioner DeGray? Will do it. Like mentioned before, I'm on TIF, I'm the rep for TIF still, but until we get the application cleared up that I was working on, you could have this one for now, and then I'll give up TIF. I'll give up TIF after for somebody.
No, I don't want TIF. You keep that one.
Okay, so do we need, we don't need to vote or anything like that? Okay.
We're all good.
Again, and thank you.
Volunteers are the best.
Unless somebody wants to fight me for it.
Anybody want? Those things usually don't get fought over.
No, they don't get fought over.
And Lori, thank you. I hope you had a nice summer as well.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Back to the public and everybody out there in TV land.
We've been trying to catch up in the office, and we're working on policies and procedures, and we've cleaned out a lot of stuff, so it's been productive.
We still have our other planner, right?
Yes, yes.
He's doing wetlands now, or?
Yep, he's doing wetlands, and George is our new PCC person.
For now?
I'm upgrading.
You're upgrading. Very good. Glad we're that important.
That's right.
So Lori, anything on the sports complex?
Absolutely nothing.
Nothing. We do know that they've received the wetlands permit.
They got their wetlands permit. We have not heard really anything from them.
And I know we voted to extend their, the property.
The zone change, right.
That was going to end soon in November, I think, so we're good with that.
Yep.
So nothing going on right now.
Not to our knowledge.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that. I know we had voted on something that was going to come up soon, but we're good for now on that.
We're good for today, yep.
Anything else? Staff, anything?
Not for now, thanks.
Thank you very much. Number 11, any outside correspondence? Outside correspondence, nothing. Commissioners correspondence. Commissioners, you have anything you want to share? Mr. Crizell.
Question for the town planner. I don't know if this is where it happens or not. We had that CROG study, or whatever study they did for the mall.
Traffic impact study?
Traffic impact study, yeah.
Yes.
Was it there anywhere that they're going to replace the stoplights on Hazard Ave?
So that was a recommendation that if there was any implementation, that that should occur, but that would be a state project, not a town project.
Yeah, but I just don't remember seeing that, that they would be doing that, so, okay.
Right.
It looks like they're going to do it, because.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They got, they got all the concrete things, thingies there.
Got it.
And I'm pushing that they add one more to it, but you know which one I'm talking about.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Well, anything we can get, we'll take.
If they're doing, if they're doing that many, they can do one more.
Yeah. I think the one with high school. That's the one with. Mr. Petronella.
Yeah, I got something. I was hoping that Rick would be here, but anyway, it involves Palumba Drive. I go to the post office daily, and many times over the years, many, many times, I've encountered this situation where the, I think it's Gale Toyota, when they get car deliveries with the, with the car carriers, the only way that they seem to be able to deliver cars there is they have to come down Palumba Drive from the, from the north headed south. They turn into the post office roadway, therefore shutting down the egress and ingress for the post office, and then they back across both lanes of Palumba, which is four lanes, and they back straight across into the driveway. So now they're shutting down the whole street, and sometimes it gets really bad, because, you know, some people are stopping and they're going, and this guy's trying to back up and waiting for traffic to give him the right of way. And it becomes a problem sometimes. And I say this only because the General Dollar Star on Raffia Road, that we made them come back because of the tractor trailer not being able to drive into the property and back up and unload, that they were going to use the street to back up and so forth. So I put that out there. I don't know if there's anything we can do about it, but Gale Toyota has a very large parking lot there that, where they can pull in and pull around the back, but it's probably just full of cars, and now they're selling trailers and all kinds of stuff. So maybe they don't have the room, but it certainly is a large lot. I just don't know if there's anything within Rick's authority to mention something, because, and this happens, it's, you know, when I go, it's usually around that noontime hour, where it's, you know, it's a little bit busy, but it shuts down Palumba Drive for a few minutes, and it's just, it's crazy.
Anything within the right of way is actually a police issue. We could certainly talk to Gale Toyota and just, you know, request that they have their trucks going onto their site, and make sure that they're not parking in areas that are blocking, that they're not supposed to be parking in, but we could also see if the police can look into it as well.
Can we make a referral to the traffic department?
That's the police.
Yeah, right. Can we make a referral to them?
Well, we'll send an email to them, yeah.
I'm surprised the post office hasn't done or said anything, because it's been going on for a while that I've noticed.
They have a permit now. I mean, you said calling them back, because we approved the, right, for Gale Toyota, they're going to be putting on that service, they haven't done anything yet.
It was for improvements. They have not started.
Right, so they're still in our, in our web, I think, right? Maybe we can.
You know, at times, they would.
What's going to happen when they do their addition?
They did get approved for that, so.
Yeah, we approved it, yeah.
They haven't started anything yet.
Something we haven't.
Anyway.
We'll see what we can do.
Yeah, that's, like I say, it gets to be a problem. I don't know why they, you know, many of them, they'll just pull up on the, on the side of the road, and they'll block one lane, but it is two lanes in each direction, so. But, you know, there's a certain driver, so I don't know, he just, he pulls in there, and he just blocks everything, and I'm sitting on Palumba Drive, and I'm just waiting for him so I could turn into the post office and wait, and wait, because he can't just back right out and to the four lanes, because other people are actually trying to go straight. And they don't know what he's trying to do, so he just tries to sneak, sneak in there and sticking his nose out there a little bit at a time, so, anyway.
It's like a definite safety issue, that you can do a referral to the PD and see if they can talk to somebody. Thank you, Commissioner Petronella. Anybody else? We don't have any continued public hearings. We do not have any continued public hearings. New public hearings, number 14 on tonight's agenda, PH 3100.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, September 12, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. PH number 3100, 31 Pheasant Hill Drive, application for special use modification to encroach into a 75-foot exclusive use area by eight feet by replacing the existing 8-by-10 deck with a new 15-foot by 11.6-foot structure. Lori Briel, owner, applicant, map 16, lot 39, R44 zone.
Okay, are the applicants here tonight? If you'd like to come up, please.
Okay, this one here.
Good evening. Just can you make sure your microphones are on and your name and address for the record, please?
Jeff Resucci, 58 Fairview Avenue.
I don't think that's on. Just a second to warm up.
Jeff Resucci, 58 Fairview Avenue.
The light will be on there.
There you go.
Lori Bro, 31 Pheasant Hill Drive, Enfield, Connecticut.
Good evening, you're welcome. So if you want to give us a brief overview of what you're planning on doing?
Yeah, so I'm the contractor, and she's the homeowner. There is an existing deck on the back of the house that's 8-by-10. We're proposing to remove that and build a sunroom that's a bit wider. It's 11 foot 6 inches by 15 feet. The 15 feet is what encroaches on the 75-foot setback currently by approximately 5 to 70 feet, based on our estimations.
Staff, is there anything you'd like to add?
So this development has quite a complex history, for those of you who remember back in the 80s and the 90s. So the way the development works is Planning and Zoning approved it under the Planned Unit Development Regulations way back then. There's been, there's been various modifications throughout the years, some for fence requests, some for sheds, patios, decks. Some have been denied, others haven't. This request comes from the similar practice of past owners and applicants. Whenever they want to do something within the Planning and Development, they need the HOA permission to be able to modify the land, and then they can apply for modifying a special use permit. So Lori's here tonight asking the commission for permission to modify her unit by taking off that existing deck. The first page in my staff report says 15 by 16. I just want to mention that that is actually a typo. It's 15 by 11.6.
15 by 11.6 is the deck, is the new structure size?
Yes, yep. 15 by 11.6. It's only going to encroach into the exclusive use area, which is not a buffer. It's not really a setback. It's common interest area that's been set aside. The owners own the unit, and in the association, they own the land underneath the unit and around the unit. But in their declaration, which is a signed contract between the unit owners and the association, they are allowed to do improvements to their unit with permission from the association. That is in Article 13 of their signed declaration, which has been filed on the land records and referenced within their property deeds. So she is here tonight asking the commission to just modify her exclusive use area behind her unit to accommodate, instead of having a 75-foot measurement for the exclusive use area, it would be 68 to 70 feet, given two feet for error, just in case. Let's see. In terms of wetlands, the structure is within the upland review area, but the wetlands regulations allow for the duly authorized agent to approve certain structures limited to size through the building permit process. And if this gets approved tonight, the duly authorized wetlands agent will approve it from their standing through the building permit. And that is all I have for tonight.
So I'm looking in here, I'm seeing some minutes from the original development. Is there a letter from the HOA, is it?
Yes.
That should be in our, is it here?
We don't really give the deeds and the letters of permission into the paper packets, but they're in the master packet online, just because every application, we get a deed, and every now and again, we get a letter of permission if the applicant is not the owner.
All right, so they've gone through the first process of approval?
Yes, by the HOA.
Community.
Yes.
Any questions from the commission? Mr. D'Antonio.
Commissioner DeGray did have her hand up for us.
Oh.
Go ahead, Chair.
My question through the chair to staff. So our current regulations, the setback is for R44 zone is 60 feet. So we're not talking, did that change from back when this was approved? Was the setback 75 feet for R44?
Yep, so it was actually approved not under the regular R44 requirements, but under the Planned Unit Development section. The setback requirement, I think it was 60 at the time, but they proposed a 75-foot exclusive use area. They did type B buffers around a part of the unit, part, part of the property, I mean, and then shrunk it down through a modification process to a 25-foot buffer, as long as the 50-foot remains vegetated. So it was from 1993, back then called Section 10.2, and it was just criteria for planned unit developments, and then it was modified throughout the years.
But even, even back then, it was still 60 feet, though?
I'd have to look again. I can't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, I'm just, because like, a current, today's regulation, this wouldn't, it doesn't seem like this would be any issue in today's regulation.
No, but the important thing to take away from this is that the exclusive use area isn't essentially a setback of its own. It's common use by the association.
All set? Anybody else? Commissioner DeGray, I'm sorry.
I have several questions. First off, this is condominiums. We can put fancy names on it, but they are common, com, com. Thank you. So they don't own the land. We have two letters in the file from two town attorneys saying they do not own the land. We, as a town, have allowed them to have decks and patios and one shed, a 10-by-10 shed, on this common use land.
That's correct.
And what you're proposing here is to build a room in addition to the house. We can call it a three-season room, and according to their declaration, the owner of the condo cannot apply, but the condo association has to apply for any additions into this common use area, which I don't see here. And I don't understand why that hasn't happened, and that they need 51% agreement of all of the tent, all the people who live there, to agree to this addition, because they're taking land from them. So first off, a deck is allowed up to a 15-by-21. We allowed that. So I don't understand why we even have this application at this point.
You said 15 by 21?
Yeah, that's, that's what we allow.
George, can you get a little closer to your mic?
According.
George.
According to what's in the file, and you know I've been in your office enough. I mean, I might as well just live there, reading this file.
Set up a couch for.
Get on retire yourself.
And I could unretire and go work there, just on this file. So I did go through the file extensively, and that's what's been allowed and approved by this commission. And so I don't even see why this is even here. And I did get the declaration that these people agreed to when they moved there, so.
Back in 93?
Yeah, still in effect.
The only thing I can say to that is we've allowed the 15-by-21 sized decks. Her deck is a lot smaller than that, and she's proposing a 15-by-11.6 sunroom. However, in terms of the unit addition, we have applicants all the time get ownership permission to apply for permits, as long as the owner's consent to the application, in which case this one did. I cannot speak for whether or not a petition of the unit owners was given or not. The applicant would have to speak about that one. But the declaration, the only part that I can point out in the declaration, right above where you mentioned the association approval, is that it states may not enlarge the size of his unit by changing the location of the exterior boundaries of the unit from that shown on the survey and plans without the prior written consent of the executive board, which the applicant has been granted.
Right, but the association has to apply for the addition. And having read this declaration, they only own the foundation up. They don't own any property around that. She says use of it. So that, you know, it's like you, anybody who lives in a condo can come in and say, hey, I want to add on.
Yeah, that is true, but, you know, we, just like I said earlier, owners can give permission to anybody to apply.
But that's not what their declaration says. The association has to come in and apply for the addition, not the owner.
The only thing I can say to that, then, if you say, for example, you deny it based on that, then it's just going to come before you again with the association.
I'm just following their rules. I'm not.
Right.
Well, we have a letter approving.
I've seen that letter right here. I see that.
But your declaration states very specifically that the association has to apply, not the owner, the association. The association said, yeah, go forth, multiply. But it also says if you increase the insurance of the exclusive use area by making improvements, that can be denied also by them. So there's several things, I don't know if you've read your declaration?
I've been looking through it, but, I mean, I've been there 24 years.
I understand that, ma'am, but you need to read this and understand it, because it's very clear that the association can apply, not the homeowner.
So the, the other enlargements that were approved were.
I can't talk about those, because I was, they're not in front of us. I'm talking about what's in front of us right now.
So it's not relevant if those, if the association has applied before for those?
I have a question.
I don't know.
I have a question to staff. Just hang on a second, okay? Staff, when you're ready.
Page 11.
Um, just one.
Yeah, no, when you're ready.
I'm looking up something else.
Could you just give us one minute, please?
One second.
8D.
So the letter of permission that we received from the president, the association, this is premier.
That dated the 25th of June?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. It says that this letter authorizes Lori Briel, owner of 31 Pheasant Hill Drive, Enfield, Connecticut, to proceed with her three-season sunroom. The association approves the plan, understanding that this is a modification of the current setback. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact our office. Respectfully, David Karat.
The property manager, management.
And that does act as a letter of permission.
Right, but it also says here on page 11D, "Any applicant to any department or any government authority for permit to make any additions, alterations, or improvement in or, in or to any unit or exclusive area shall be executed by the association only."
So.
Doesn't say, I can give you a letter that says, God bless you, go do it. They have to apply.
So is it, is it in our purview to enforce rules of these condo associations?
The declaration.
I don't know if we gave them the authority to.
The declaration is a contract between the association and the unit owner. Zoning trumps the declaration.
Right.
Rules the land, the exclusive use area.
Right, but that is not our basis to determine that. That's the association's problem.
And she have given permission in past to only allow decks and patio, not patios, porches and one shed.
Well, if you'd like, you could always ask for the applicant to grant an extension if you'd like the association to be present per the declaration.
I'm just saying is that's, those are the only things that we have allowed. So if other people have done things without permits, that's not for us at this time.
Right. I will say that we look only at the zoning and what the conditions of approval were, are. We don't, we do not get involved with private contracts, and this is a private contract.
We make them file a declaration in the.
Right, so they know what they're supposed to do amongst themselves.
Right, where I'm getting, where I'm going, it's not enforceable by us.
No.
Because I know they have to file them on a land record.
Well, we still have not allowed. Well, we still have not allowed sunrooms or additions, we allow-
So-
-patios and porches.
Right, and that is true, this is new.
I just want to get that, so, excuse me, so, we need to focus on what she's saying about the pad, next, we're going to focus on the patios, we have to take off the table their agreement, their association rules, because it's not in our purview, so we need to not even-
All right, I'll take that off.
If you don't mind, yeah.
Nope, I'll take that off.
Because if it's not in our purview, we can't use that at all, but then we can continue, please, on the decks, go ahead, I'm sorry.
We're adding a room on, and enclosing a porch, all right, let's say that, it's still not what's something that we are allowing, and if other people have done it, that's, and not have come to us, that's outside of us, we have not, we have no control.
Right.
But this is what's in front of us right now.
Of course, so this is brand new, we haven't had additions before, and any additions existing in the development did, obviously did not come before the commission, that would be a different ballgame, different conversation, different time. So, the deck approval, I mean, I know I keep saying this, but, I mean, it's only fact the decked approval sizes is a lot larger than her proposed sunroom, she has an existing deck there now, all she's doing is basically enclosing it and expanding. I can't, I can't really see an issue with this, I mean, other people might disagree, but just because the association has given her permission, and she's got an association approval, this declaration, though it is a contract, was required from the original approval of planning and zoning to prevent issues down the road between the association and the unit, and that was as far as their purview went. I mean, this will be probably the first addition that will lead a door to open to other units to getting additions, I mean, just like any other applicant, they'd have to come before you for an addition, so this would be the first one.
And you just said it yourself, she's just going to make it bigger and enclose it, that's adding a room.
Smaller, she's making.
No.
No, she's making it a little bigger.
She's going to make it 10, she's going to a 15-by-11.6.
Right, question, is this going to be on piers, or are you putting a full cellar under this thing? Is it going to be like a deck?
Oh, yeah, piers, yep.
Right, sonotubes.
Correct.
I don't know if this-
Does that make a difference?
Yeah, it does prevent less soil disruption, but maybe you could consider a condition where if the applicant ever leaves the property, that the sunroom could be taken down, or it would be reverted back to your original footprint, or something like that.
I don't think that's a good, I wouldn't want to do that.
I don't know.
Why would we do that to somebody, take away the value of it?
Mr. Chair?
Just a thought, just because we're having them come in.
I'm having a hard time understanding you, Linda, and why the, you don't think the deck and enclosed deck can be allowed.
It's, it's the first step, because I did that, we-
I did it too.
Right, so there we go, we went from a patio, a deck, to a sun, to a screened-in deck, then it became a three-season room, and the next thing you know, it's a four-season, it's an addition, it's an addition to the house. They do not, and we have two letters in the file from two town attorneys.
On this case?
That, yes, not on this particular one, that says, "The exclusive use area is not their property, their private property, their private property is from the foundation up, they don't own the exclusive use area." So you're building into an area that you don't own, they don't own that land, it's part of an association, but they don't privately own that.
Can I just interject?
Sure.
On the letters from the attorneys, they're not part of this application, there's something that happened over time, so that's like doing-
It is part of this.
No, wait, no, 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 it's not part of this application, it happens to do with this property, I don't think it's relevant to what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, it is. This is a, you don't own the property, you can't build that.
No, but what I'm saying, we're using a legal attorney letter from another application.
It's part of this property.
But the association is approving the use of their land in this manner, by virtue of this letter, I think.
I would strike those letters from the attorneys, we shouldn't be using those.
We shouldn't be using our town attorney's letters, saying that they don't own the property.
But they're not commenting against this application.
I'm sorry, I disagree.
Excuse me, I think that the question-
You will help us on that attorney letter.
I just think that the question of whether somebody owns it or not, these units are strictly owned by themselves, they own, the property owner owns the unit, not the land, at any point in this entire development. Nobody, nobody that owns their, their unit owns any land, including the land underneath their house.
Including the deck.
It doesn't matter, it's part of the structure.
Right.
They own the structure, and that's it.
Period.
They don't own land, whether it's exclusive use area or otherwise.
She owns her deck currently.
But they're allowed the use of the land-
Right.
-to live in their condo, because the condo's on the land.
Right, right.
What we're doing is, we're talking about, you know, adding five or six feet of the land, in order to build this porch.
George is trying to find this-
And they're saying that's okay.
So, the declaration just says, for the easements and licenses, that each unit owner has a right and non-exclusive easement of enjoyment in common with all other owners and to the common elements, including the sidewalks running parallel to the roadway and located in the exclusive use area. So, basically, it just states that they have a right to the use and enjoyment of their exclusive use area, as long as they follow the rest of the conditions of their declaration.
Right, and she was trying to find the section in the actual planning and zoning approval, where it says that, and I don't know if you could try to find it, but basically, it says that you can modify the location with this, by modifying the special use permit, and that's what this application actually is trying to do.
That's why the other applicants in the past have come before you, for the fences, the decks, patios, we just haven't had an addition until now, so this is the first addition. We always require them, if they're doing any unit improvement, any unit addition, that they have to modify their special permit approval, and they have to come back before you.
But how, how are we defining it as an addition, when they're just enclosing, putting a new deck on it and closing it?
That's a good question.
I'm having trouble with this, but please, everybody else, I'm sure you've got some thoughts.
It's an expansion of a deck, expansion and enclosure of a duck, which is already attached to the house.
Can I ask just a quick question, so, but isn't in this case the, the association acting basically as the owner, and the owner giving the tenant, let's just call it, the authority to use that land in what she wants to use it for? So, to me, it's, it's, I mean, it's, like Frank said, I'm kind of missing the point here.
We're just following directions of special use permit, so, it's not our decision, it's your decision.
What, go ahead, I'm sure everybody else. Walter?
I was going to talk about the, what you took off, about the letter, to me, the letter gives the authority that she can represent the, the association in this permit, that's what I was, that's the way I'm reading, that's the way I'm taking the letter, that she's the representative of the association.
Walter, you said a letter, you're saying a letter dated June 25th.
Yeah, the letter that the association said that it was okay.
That's what I have up in front of me.
To me, that's, the way I'm reading it, is that she has, she's representing the association in this application, that's what, that's, but again, that's my opinion, so.
See, I believe in the association and in the condo world, if you break any of the rules, you hear from the committee, or the chairman, or you get violent, whatever, your fines, right? So, I don't, Mr. Dutch, you must, you got us off the fish.
I'm looking at this, this document back from 2000, I'm sorry. I'm looking at a document here from 2006, where I believe there was an application for that association to grant the, the unit members the ability to place a 10-by-10 shed on each of the properties.
That's correct.
Which is essentially what's happening here. Now, that was allowed, you know, granted it's a shed, but it's still a structure that's being put on the property, and-
Detached.
Detached, but the association apparently had granted approval, and it's, you know, for all units, I believe, and I tend to agree with, with Commissioner Crizell, where the, the owner of the property is really the association, correct?
That's correct.
And they're granting their permission to the unit owner to do this.
That's correct.
Just as the applicant has granted by, by letter, Jeff the builder over here, permission to represent her, because, you know, he's not the property owner, but he's got to have authority to represent her, so she issued a letter to him, granting him authority to act on behalf of her, to us, and represent her. So if she wasn't here, he'd have full authority, but it's really the same thing, so.
The letter actually mentions the applicant's name, too.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I, I think the way it's submitted, I really don't see an issue with this, from, from what I, I think everything is certainly done the way it's supposed to be.
It seems like they're here for, under our jurisdiction, is the setback.
That's correct.
That's all I think our purview is here.
It would be more-
After we look at all these variables.
It'd be more intense if she was modifying the buffer, removing trees or vegetation, or doing, like, an entire different location in the unit, so.
So they're asking us to relax six feet of the required buffer, six feet?
I think it's six feet.
I read too much today.
It's about, it's about five to seven.
Your mic on?
Oh, okay. Repeat. It says five feet with two feet, two-foot buffer for air, so we're asking for five, we said it could be five to seven.
If you look at the first page of my memo, it's the very, very small triangle is where the encroachment will be, compared to the deck, the deck's in yellow, the sunroom's in blue. The red is the exclusive use area.
And the blue's going to be the new.
It's already a lawned area, she's not removing trees or existing vegetation, and she's not-
What are you encroaching on back there, is that, after those woods?
Nothing, there's nothing, my-
There's no weather properties?
My yard is very deep, it goes way back.
What I'm talking about, after those trees, what are they encroaching on, out of the picture?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
My understanding is it's like a property that's been reserved.
Oh, okay.
It's just a big, unused property.
Open space.
It's owned by someone.
A former farm, I think, I was told, in the memo.
Okay. Yeah.
It's kind of like open areas.
I'm outside.
All right, so this is a public hearing, so, anybody have any more questions before I open it up? Okay, so if you would, just step back into the, have your seats, I'm going to see if anybody in the public is for or against this application, then we'll have you come back up, don't go too far. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this application? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this application?
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Mary Ann Turner, and I have lived next to this property for 31 years. The first thing I'd ask you to do, before you even decide whatever you're going to decide, is to put that property into compliance. I have come here, be honest with you, the only one who has any history along with me is Lori, who was the assistant planner back in the 90s. There has been a zoning violation, see, click fix, on this property going on almost 500 days. The reason? Dumping in the buffer, expansion of property, they added decks, and then they enclosed them, and then they added a deck, and then they added a patio. These are just the ones I can see from my backyard. I know that you don't see this as an issue, but all I've ever asked of this board, with the many changes that there's been, follow the rules that are, that were meant for this development. You have another development just like this, that's now coming in, that you approved over on Brainerd Road. This is the first one, it technically was the last one, because of the many, many years of problems. So the quick thing is, I'd like this looked at first. I just want to make sure you understand, I heard you talk about the lawyer letters and then when they came in, I have a copy of the original document from Pheasant Hill wanting to expand decks to 8-by-10, 8-by-10, okay, and then they talked about sheds, this was the proposal. This was a letter dated January 18th of 2001, from Jose Guiner, your previous person, and it specifically talked about decks, patios, and sheds. January 11th, 2006, although the commission approved the application for decks, the association never filed the special use permit on the land record, and the approval expired, so they don't have a right to come in front of you and ask for an expansion of decks, because they've already done it, and it didn't, it's not on the land use. These aren't memos that I made up, these are 31 years of me following this project. These are your documents. And I understand, commissioners, that you may not want to take into consideration the attorney's letters, that go back years, but the reason that you should is because the attorneys have had these situations, the, brought in front of them through previous commissions, because this isn't the first time nor the last. Now, I'm not saying that the lady that wants to expand her deck isn't a nice person, I'm not saying that her property shouldn't have the additions that she wants, but it is not an R33 or R44 house, it is a condo, it's a planned residential development. And when you asked commissioners if the trees had been taken down, I have plans in here that shows the landscaping, I know that that property had trees removed, it might not have been this summer, but I believe it was last summer, and your rules, and when I say your, I mean the generic you, say that they are not to come, cut one thing down out there unless they come in front of you and get permission, and it gets put on the landscape plan. Okay, so technically, those trees should be replanted. Part of the problem in the buffer, yes, it's a 50-foot C buffer yard. Years ago, this commission said, "We understand their perspective, they only had a 35-foot backyard of grass." It just didn't seem fair that I would have a 50-foot buffer from behind my house, so the commission said, "We'll give 25 to you, and we'll let them keep 25 to them." Please understand, your rules no longer have residential to residential, do not have buffer zones anymore, but mine does. And I understand why you're saying, Commissioner Hooper, you're questioning this, this development isn't new, and you already had rules that may not have been here when you were here right now, but they were here when many, before you were here, and many lawyers, and I have been through at least six planners on this project, not one time have I ever come in front of you and asked you to do anything for me. I only ask you again today, follow the rules you have, they're there for a reason, they're not meant to be bent and twisted. We have an exclusive use area, they don't own it, they can walk on it, they can play croquet on it, they can play with their kids on it, they can run their dogs on it, but that also means they could go in their neighbor's yard and do this, the problem, and I understand it. We, the town of Enfield, made an error, when Mr. Liaska came in front of you in 1993, started this project, he found a loophole. The loophole was, they don't have to be connected. Remember when condos first started in Enfield, many of you do, maybe Commissioner Holinsky, we had condos popping up all over, they're attached, in a grouping, but our rules had a little tiny word, it said "or," and Mr. Liaska caught it, because when he came to build on that piece of farm, it was going to be apartments, he didn't go forward with the apartments, he went forward with a planned residential development detached. I came in and I said, "I'm cool with it, you're giving me five neighbors to my backyard," but I, you know, I had no issue with that. I will say technically, Pheasant Hill's very quiet, okay? Okay? It's just usually spring when things get a little antsy, because they start trimming all the hedges down. The hedges in the buffer. The buffer that I begged, I begged this commission to take down and fill it with good, healthy trees and blueberry bushes. But this commission agreed with Mr. Liaska to allow the natural vegetation, which is rosebushes and poison ivy, and now the grapevines, and you get my drift. They're killing the trees, and they're stuck because they can't pull them down, even though they should, because they're doing damage to the trees, that I'm gonna come back to you and say when the trees fall down, they have to put them back. You understand? This is not new. This is not new. Yes, she wants to expand her deck. I am telling you right now. I understand the staff. People have done stuff down there. But wrongs don't make rights. If they built them without permits, they should be cited. I know that we have gone and told people who have built things without permits to take them down. I'm not trying to be the bad guy here. I'm asking you, just do the job that's in front of you. So in 1998, your town manager, who was our town attorney, Christopher Broxton, specifically talked about the common use area. The individual unit owners do not own the exclusive use area. You're going back and forth about it. I don't think any of you disagree about that. Your question that you're trying to grapple with is, are they allowed to add five feet? Eight feet? Will the next time be 20 feet? Please understand, this is not just today. This is forever. If 31 years from now, if I'm still alive, this package will be this big. And each, I have a copy of Pheasant Hill's homeowner amendment of rules and regulations, and I understand they're not yours to enforce. But it specifically states that any unit owner violating any of the above recited amendments, and one of them is about the town, if they have to come out here and tell them, "Stop doing what you're doing," and they take them to court over it, it's specific, the unit owner will pay $100 for each violation and shall cause, and any violation such as cause the town of Enfield or any government authority to pursue legal action, the unit owner of said violation will be responsible for all costs, attorney fees, and fines. Is that for yours to enforce? It is not. But it is definitely for Pheasant Hill owners to understand. I'm telling you right now, there are violations out there that all I'm asking you to do is clean it up. When they came to us, and this was with the town, and they got the town to agree to pick up their trash, I begged them not to do it. I said it was going to cost the town across the board a lot of money. But back, a couple of our councilmen were still sitting there, they were part of it. We all know what costs are for trash right now. Do I disagree that they should get, have their trash picked up? I was on the fence over it because their roads aren't as wide, they have to pay for their roads. I can go through the whole history, you're gonna be bored. I'm gonna save you. You get the drift. The buffer yard we chatted about, yes, they requested a fence. They had to take it down. You cannot fence an exclusive use area, which means you cannot put something that impedes the way of your neighbor. Is seven feet impeding the way of your neighbor? They did add the line on the map, which I have a copy of. And if you all didn't have a chance, there's a lot of maps on this property, because they have to be constantly updated and changed every time you folks make an addition changer. It has to be put into the record. You know the problem with the records? They get this big, and none of you have time to read these. The reason I have these, I gotta make, I will tell you. When I saw Pheasant Hill was coming back up on the docket, it brought me back down memory lane. And please understand, they didn't put their public hearing sign up, but it's because of me that you did not have to put them off again, because I called and said, "Their sign's down, you wanna get it put back up." So I'm not being a bad guy here. I actually was looking out for them, even though I'm pretty sure if they're watching right now, they're not seeing it that way. The land trust, one of you asked, what's the property around it? When the property was built, and they used 13 of the acres, there's a gigantic land trust that goes around it. That's what you're talking about. The old farm and stuff, that's part of the land trust, the Northern Connecticut Land Trust, which I, there's a piece of it, if you get bored, you can come over my way. I actually have people in Pheasant Hill that have taken their tables and chairs and literally put them inside the land trust. They're sitting in the woods. I've had the CEO out there, it's like, "Just get them out." I've had them go in and they're, you know, I know we all put junk behind our, back of our sheds because we can, it's our property. In Pheasant Hill, they put them in the land trust. They've had at times, and I have not been down there, but on the opposite side, heading towards the Master Birdie property, is a gigantic wetland with, in the olden, olden, olden days, we actually used to go duck hunting back there. Not me, my husband, but it's pretty wet. And one of the things that was said is in that land trust area, they were to plant blueberry bushes and others. They're in the documents that they were requested to do back then. And you know what happened? They started to cut them down and drop in their grass clippings in. And I am talking just literally, not even two weeks ago, I'm in my house cooking, and all of a sudden I hear a lawnmower, and I go outside, it stops, the guy is walking up into the 25-foot buffer that's right behind my house, and what do you think he was doing? He was dumping his grass clippings into the buffer zone. I called Rick. Folks, you ever wanna take a field walk? Take a walk. There's Christmas trees, there's pumpkins, there's all kinds of stuff. They cut the trees. One of the gentlemen started to build a garden. I mean, it's constant.
Can I just interrupt for one second, Mary Ann? Mr. Turner, I interrupt you for one second. So normally when we start public hearings, I ask you guys how much time you wanna let, I forgot to, but there's one, I just wanna let, you know, have Mary Ann continue.
I will wrap it up.
No, 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 you can keep going. I use, I just want, for the benefit of the rest of the members, usually I'll say, "What do you guys wanna do? Five minutes, three minutes?" But everybody's good for Mary Ann.
You actually probably did yourself a favor, Commissioner Alamo.
No, no, I want, I'm letting you talk. I just wanna make sure it's okay with everybody else. I'm just one person.
And I get it. I do get it.
'Cause I didn't follow the rules I usually follow.
Yeah, well.
So.
And one of the last things is, when they talked about, there's actually a document that is on the land use records to the town of Enfield and to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is how much reading you folks would really have to do. And it specifically states about the lower boundaries of the units. Okay? So I need you to keep in mind, and I can go back if you really wanna be bored, and I'll pull out the maps that shows the original plans of what these housing stock looked like. There were a variety of types, ranches and double, two stories and stuff like that, and they all had a deck on them. They have a deck on them. What has happened, and you know this, we've all done it, if you own a home, you've all done it. You've changed your footprint. That's what's happening. This is not the same as an R-33 or an R-44 housing stock. This is a condo complex with the name of Planned Residential Development. If you open Pandora's Box, which is the same story that I've said to many commissions here, you open it for all of the types of housing stock that will come down this way in the future. You, no offense, you won't be here. There'll be another commission, and they may not know either, and I may not be here. All I'm asking you, seven feet, or five feet, or two feet, may not sound like a lot, but it's not what this development was. They have a deck, enclose that deck. It's already there. It's okay. You still have to approve if they're gonna make it a part of their house. But I'll guarantee you that within time, and if you ever really, and one of the documents in here, which I won't dig for, but I read it, the planning and zoning department should go down there and take inventory. I have one, they're, they do allow to have one shed. The guy behind me has two. You would really think that they would be smart enough not to do it behind me. And do I agree that they need an opportunity to get in the buffer and pull down all the strangle vines? Yes, I absolutely do. And I would help them do it, because it only is a betterment for all of us. But the trees are taking a beating right now. But it has to be done through you. It has to be supervised. And I don't think that we should, I don't think anybody wakes up in the morning and says, "Gee, let me see how I'm gonna aggravate the town," or "How am I gonna break a rule?" I don't think they do. And I don't think this lady is either. But what I'm saying to you is, you may not think this is a big deal. It's a big deal. And I'm asking you, and truthfully, I'm gonna leave you to it. If you have questions, which I highly doubt you'll have for me, but I have the documents about the part that this, the deck thing was never approved, and so that's not on your, unless you wanna come back and start that whole process over again, that's not on your table today. And the 75-foot exclusive use, like 75-foot line, Commissioner, that was very specific to this type of development. So you cannot make a blanket statement of what it is today. I get that it makes it easier, but that's not what this is. And you don't get to change the rules with a blanket. If you wanna change them, you have to go in and change them, and all of the documents have to be put on file, and all of the plans have to be rewritten. It's not simple. And just so you understand, I did have a relationship with some of the past presidents in Pheasant Hill. I would just pick up the phone, I'd call Mr. Quimby, I'd call Mr. Burchard, who had just passed away, some of you may have known him. There was a couple of the gals. I would just keep their phone on the bulletin board in my office, and if something was going on, I'd call them and we'd work it out. We didn't get in front of you. So I haven't been a bad neighbor, I've just been a pretty constant one. I'm asking you to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor or against this application? For the second time, anybody else like to speak for or against this application? And for the third time, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this application? See, a non-public participation, public comments are now closed for PH 3100. Can the applicants please come back up? So my question to staff is, we heard a lot of testimony from our witness tonight. What relevance that she has shown us tonight have to do with this application? She's obviously very passionate and spent a lot of time researching, but I would expect that staff would have those kind of concerns within your staff report.
Yep.
So please collaborate if you would.
Yeah, so I myself was unaware of any existing violations Ms. Turner mentioned. If we can follow up with Rick tomorrow to see what the status is of the original complaint when she last spoke to Mr. Rochelli, and we can investigate further with the violations and the second shed and encroaching into the buffer zone of those units. Let's see. The public hearing sign on her property, it was posted on July 11th, and then it was stolen. When she was notified of the stolen public hearing sign, she immediately replaced it the same day. This modification, this would only modify the exclusive use area setback for this unit specific. But in order to change it, you have to get that special permit modification from planning and zoning, which is why she's here tonight. And the last thought that I had while Ms. Turner was speaking was, and this will be up to the applicant and the commission, of course, but maybe she would be okay with, say, forfeiting a shed in lieu of a sunroom. Just a thought.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yes.
We'll let you speak again. As well as let staff.
That's all I had. That was it.
Lori, do you have anything else?
Under normal circumstances, if you look at a lot of these properties, and I'm gonna say instead of properties, the structures within these properties, this unit was actually placed in a situation where they cannot expand their deck to the maximum size without going over the exclusive use area setback. If you look at all the other ones, they've all been set back from that line, they've all been placed parallel. This one happens to be at the corner, and they kitty-cornered it such that they really do kind of almost have a little bit of a hardship there, because they're not able to expand it because of the location of it. Anybody else? I mean, I'm just looking at this one page, and I think you all have that. Anybody else would actually have the ability to expand their deck appropriately without any concerns at all?
So what we, what, the application we have in front of us and the information provided in our packets, and the testimony we've heard tonight, and the evidence, other evidence that was put on the record, are we still here only for the setback?
Yes. For this unit only.
A lot of information, Ms. Turner had a lot of information.
Yes. You are here for, or they are here for the setback for this unit only.
And our responsibility, and the information we take in relative to this, is just focusing on a setback.
Right.
Because there was a lot said tonight here.
And I can attest.
And weather, all things.
Yes.
Yeah, we have, I mean.
I can attest to.
She's been here six times, she said, for, it looks like she had a very large packet, too.
Well, I was here in the 90s when they were taking away her buffer, and I can attest to that. And I think that there are violations out there, and I think that we definitely need to look at this. And it's also something that in the future, maybe we work with the HOA and maybe fix this solution, requiring a special use permit for any modification. We're literally gonna, they're gonna have to, should this go forward, they have to file a brand-new special use permit with the map and everything.
Wow, for the whole project?
Theoretically, yeah. So it's a bad process, in my opinion. But it is, but it is the process. And the process is that they need to get a special use permit, and the homeowners' association to get any modification to the setback approved.
So just, Ms. Turner said that was the only development like that, but isn't the one across the police station like that as well?
I really can't say offhand.
It's a little secret, isn't it?
I'm sure that there's many others in town.
Right. There's more, there's a lot of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I thought.
So, and you know, and you know, zoning processes change with times and the needs of the community, and, you know, it used to be condos, and it used to be 55 and older, and we see how the progression is. Things change.
Right.
So.
I think Commissioner DeGray has something.
I just have one concern that Mrs. Turner brought up was the fact that they never filed to allow any kind of porches or enlarging the decks and patios.
I think Georgie has an answer.
Was that done, or?
They came back in the future for the sheds. PH 2222 was for the patio sheds and the decks. The approval expired, they never filed the special permit on land records, and then they came back again, PH 2533 for the sheds for each unit.
Just for the sheds? They didn't do anything for the decks or the patios?
I can't recall off the top of my head if it included decks and patios, I'd have to look at it again, but I do recall seeing the 10-by-10 sheds.
Okay, 'cause that, I mean, if that was never filed on the records.
The PH 2533 was.
It's a whole different spin on that. Then, you know.
I will say that staff, Georgie in particular, has spent days, not just hours, but.
Months.
Actually, many, many, many days, and so has Commissioner DeGray as well, because, I mean, the files here, I mean, what Mary Ann Turner had before her is less than, way less than what we have on her desk right now. And I know that Linda has looked at this in great depth, and it's. And I know that Linda has looked at this in great depth, and it's very confusing. You know, and I think it can be interpreted many different ways.
I just want to go back to our purview and what this application before us is here tonight. Even... Those are open violations that are there.
We should be investigating them.
But that has nothing to do with our decision. I mean, we can't say no because there's violations.
And we will investigate that.
I hope you do.
Yes.
But I mean, that's Rick's department, and it should be taken care of.
Yep, we will investigate.
But if we say, and everybody knows, if you vote no, you have to give a reason why you're voting no. So I don't know. That's not a reason, because somebody else has a violation.
And I must err on the side of caution to not make a decision based off of complaints and potential zoning violations.
That's what I'm saying.
Just for case law.
That's exactly what I'm saying. We have to look at what's before us. Any other commissioners want to add? Maryann, Mrs. Turner gave us a lot of information.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I don't think we can solve 30 years of issues on one application. I mean, obviously, she makes some good points. She's done a lot of work, and I appreciate that from her standpoint. And it sounds like there is something we need to look at and see what zoning violations are there and how that can be resolved and all that. And I'm all for making a positive push into that. But frankly, I haven't changed my mind on the application. I believe this application should be approved because it's a minor... I consider it a minor thing, and I know it may open Pandora's Box for other decks and that kind of... But they have to come before us anyway.
Right.
Okay? So I'm in favor of it, and I think we can look at resolving the myriad of other issues, you know, as we go along. You know, what are the most important things? Is there really a zoning violation that we should address? Let's go do that.
Please.
Since our purview is the setback, could we make the... If we're going to approve this, can we make it a condition to pull it out of the setback? So that five extra feet that you're talking about, bring it back so it doesn't infringe on that area?
Are you talking about the extra feet for construction?
Well, the... So it's in that exclusive area, right? So it's pushing in there.
So they're asking us for six feet?
I'm sorry, six feet.
They're asking us for six. Are you saying don't?
So could we pull it back to six feet?
There's no room. They wouldn't... The project wouldn't be viable.
Okay, that was all I was asking.
Well, then, if we did that, they wouldn't need to be here.
Right, yeah.
Right? Commissioner D'Antonio?
Which is an option.
Yeah, I just wanted to... I mean, I won't be voting, but I just wanted to say, I mean, I am in support of this. I agree. It's a pretty minor change in the grand scheme of things. They're going through the proper process, going through the right channels to get this approval. They've got the approval from the HOA themselves, the property owners. And I just wanted to address the whole Pandora's Box thing Commissioner Holinsky brought up, and it was mentioned as well. I think that's kind of putting a negative spin on it, calling it a Pandora's Box is if we don't know what's coming. I mean, if our regulations allow for special permits to modify previously-approved site plans or previously-approved special permits, that's not Pandora's Box. That's just... That's just our normal regulation. So it's just going through the process. I don't think there's any need to see of it if neighbors come down the line and say, hey, you know, they built an addition, you know, wow, now I know I can build an addition. Why is that a bad thing? That's not a bad thing. They're going to have to go through the process. They're going to have to, you know, make sure it works on their specific unit. They're going to come to us, and we're going to see, okay, is it affecting any of the buffers? Is it going to actually impact any of the neighbors?
Right.
In which, in this particular case, I don't see how this is going to impact any of the neighbors. It's not impacting any of the buffers. So we're looking at it case by case. And that's, again, it's not Pandora's Box. It's just the right way to do it.
So to that, that's why I asked what they were backing up to. Because most of the times, as you'll see, when people come in, applicants come in to ask for us to do this with buffers, you know, they need a few feet, most of the time it's towards a neighbor where, you know, that's close by, something that, you know, another structure or another... So usually, we have to take that, you know, you've got to take that into consideration. Here, we're not dealing with another structure, another person, another family. It's... So a lot of times when people look for setbacks, it's, you know, encroaching really onto somebody else's privacy. So here, that's why I asked. That kind of goes to what you're saying.
Yeah, completely agree.
Commissioner Cruzell.
So the yellow is what's there now. And the back of the yellow is in line with the back of the house, right? So the end of the deck is aligned with the end of the house?
One second.
The blue is going to be the new. See the blue?
Yeah, I see that.
That's the new proposed.
Yeah, it's hard to see on the aerial. My aerial could be off.
So the blue is going to stick out beyond the end of the house?
Yes.
No, it won't. The current deck is 10 feet. That's a foot and a half in from the end of the house. The proposed addition will be to the right, to the edge of the house, which is the 11 foot six.
All right, so explain it again. We're seeing a yellow outline, which I'm assuming is the current deck.
Yes.
We're seeing a blue outline, which I'm assuming, and I think others are as well, that that's the new part.
Yes, which if you look to the right side from this picture, the blue is farther to the right than the yellow. So the existing deck, that yellow line is 10 feet, and what we're proposing is the 11 foot six. But that 11 foot six is in line with the current side of the house.
The side, but I'm talking about the back of the house.
Okay, then yes, it'll be past the back of the house.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's why I wanted you to make that clear, because you said no. But it is going past the house.
Understood. I thought you were talking about the side.
So how much... How many feet does it stick out beyond the back of the house?
I believe it's seven feet, but I can check from the plans.
Walter, that was my point.
One at a time.
Sorry.
If you turn the page, there's a more detailed...
Hang on, hold your thought.
Six feet, isn't it? It's not to scale.
I know it's not to scale. That's not my point. But it does stick out beyond the back of the house. She's making the... The side is going to be equal, that's fine, but it is going to stick out beyond the back of the house.
That's what they're asking.
So...
Other units have the same thing, too, where they're not in line with the real line of the house.
But again, so why can't we... Why can't... We're talking, what, three feet more would be in the encroachment? In the area?
It looks... On the plans...
Hang on, one at a time. Hang on. Go ahead, Walter. Hold your thoughts.
So the proposed is approximately seven feet past the back of the house. But I think the house is two feet inside of that 75-foot buffer. So we're only asking for five of that seven feet.
And some of it was just in case, too, right? You're going to have some contingency?
Yes, yeah.
Just in case you went a little for your excavation, and is that what that was?
It was just a...
Measurement.
Because we didn't...
Error measurement, just in case.
Error measurement, contingency?
Yeah, because the aerials are always off. So I always estimate an error, a margin of error, just to be on the safe side.
Okay, Mr. Cruzell still has the floor.
So why don't we split the difference? Do you really need that big of a sunroom? Can we... Can you sacrifice some, and we'll sacrifice some?
Go ahead. You should talk to them.
I don't understand why anybody would be upset about it. My neighbor next to me, who's actually the president of the association, he said, Lori, do whatever you want. Do whatever you want. And the other side of my house is all woods, so I'm not blocking anybody over there. And it's going to be six feet of a difference. And even though it is, how is it called, exclusive use area, it's my backyard. I have a bunch of bushes planted, sort of dividing our yards a little bit, but it's my yard. I know it's not... I don't own it.
Yeah.
But... And the other thing is about being the first one to do it. So what? So what if I'm the first one? That's good. To me, that's growth. Like, maybe somebody else will want to do it, then they have to come, like he said, in front of you and request it, just like I'm going through the proper channels. I'm, you know, I know, in fact, there are two other porches on my street. I'm going through the proper channels. If they did, I don't know, but I shouldn't be punished for that.
We're not blaming you for anything. You're doing the right thing. Please don't take it that way. It's just questioning. You know, people are curious. The commissioners are going to ask questions, but it doesn't reflect on you at all.
Absolutely not.
You're doing the right thing.
Okay.
Please continue.
And thank you for coming and putting up with this, is what I should be...
Well, I can tell you...
We want to be... We want to make sure we're fair.
Well, I can tell you, I am the first owner of this house. I watched this house be built. And this is my dream to have my porch. I'm a retired nurse. I took care of family members for the last five years, my mother in particular. This is my dream, and this is what I really want. Ms. Turner, I know from way back in the beginning when I bought my house, her name had come up constantly, making complaints about our street. I don't know why she hates us so much, but there's... I mean, how am I hurting anybody by building a little enclosed sunroom? How am I hurting anyone? That's what I want to know.
Especially at the end of the...
And I'm in the back. I'm at the end of the cul-de-sac, all the way at the end of the cul-de-sac. Nobody behind me, nobody on one side of me, and the one on the other side is...
And like I said, those are usually important issues when we're talking about encroachments.
Exactly.
Do you all hear that, Walter? Do you all hear that?
Well, I'm just, again, I'm just going to throw it out there one more time. Let's split the difference.
Well, I think that changes the application, and I think staff may say we can't do that.
Yeah, that would change.
That would change the application.
Okay.
Do you all hear that? Commissioner Millay, please.
She has the blessing of the HOA. She's come before us with all the proper things that she needs to do. I say we move on and put this to bed.
Thank you, Mr. Millay. Anybody else? Anybody else? So at this time, I am going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made by Commissioner Holinsky and seconded by Commissioner Cruzell to close the public hearing. Show... I'm sorry? Yeah, show... Yeah. Show of hands for closing the public hearing.
Aye.
Now, at this point, we have no more dialogue with the applicants. So we can't ask you any more questions. The record is in now. The record's final, and we can discuss amongst ourselves and deliberate. Is there anything staff would like to add first before the commission wants to deliberate?
I don't have anything, Georgie.
Georgie, you have anything?
I think everything's been delivered tonight.
Commissioner DeGray.
Nothing against this woman. I understand what she wants, she wants. We all want what we want. But the only thing that they're allowed according to our regulations and Georgie and Lori have to agree is patios and decks, nothing about enclosed rooms. And I don't care if they go into the setback. That part I don't care, as long as it's an open patio or deck or a porch. It's open. It can't be enclosed. That's the definition of a deck or patio or a porch. It's open. And the enclosing part is... Changes that, but that's not allowed under the regulations. And we have to follow regulations. And to say, oh, no, we'll just throw them out the window, is unfair to anybody else, you know? So somebody comes in for something, we just say, oh, well, yeah, okay. We don't have to follow our regulations. We'll just follow yours. The regulations say patio or deck. That's where I'm at. I don't care about the encroachment into that little piece. It's what our regulations say. So that's where I stand.
Thank you. Anybody else have any final comments before we put this to a vote? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing number 3100, 31 Pheasant Hill Drive, application for a special use permit modification to encroach into an exclusive use area by eight feet resulting in 68-foot exclusive use area. Lori Briol, owner, applicant, map 16, lot 39, R44 zone.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, discussion. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Secretary, roll call, please.
Yep, Frank Alamo.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Against, because it's going against our regulations. Has to be a deck or patio, not an enclosed room.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Joseph Mullay.
Four.
Pat Hooper.
Four.
Walter Cruzell.
Four.
And John Petronal is four.
Motion passed.
Six to one.
Six to one. Congratulations. Enjoy your... Enjoy your side room. And thank you for your career in nursing. I always need nurses.
Thirty-eight and a half years.
Wow.
We need some R and R.
Yes, yes, I do. I'm going to bike four to waste the last.
Have a good night. Okay. Does anybody need a break? Because we got a couple coming up that... We have to go downstairs, huh? Yeah.
Take the elevator.
You got a... Oh, free... So anybody want to do a short recess, five minutes? We have a couple of applications that could have some discussion here. Well, it'll take us two minutes to get downstairs, Walter. Okay. We're going to adjourn for... We're going to take a break for five minutes. We'll adjourn. Did you have some? Meeting back to order, meeting of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission, September 12th, 2024, is now back in order. Thank you very much. Continuing on, B, public hearing 3101, 3101, Mr. Secretary.
Yep. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, September 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing number 3101, 117 North Street and parcel 100-6. Application for special use permit for excavation activities per section 8.40. Joseph LaCory, applicant, owner, map 93, lot 15, map 100, lot 6, I-1 zone.
Are the applicants here? Oh, I'm sorry, are the applicants here?
Yes, sir. Good evening. For the record, Wes Wentworth, Wentworth Civil Engineers, the design engineer, or responsible civil engineer and soil scientist on this site for the owner and applicant, Mr. LaCory.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. It's been a long road. As some of you know who've been here, some of you are new faces, but basically, there's been a, at least a three- or four-year challenge to, between court orders and attempts. This is our third attempt of coming back to trying to get Mr. LaCory into conformance for his existing business on North Street, 117 North Street. Do you want me to, this is, do you want me to just combine both public hearings and...
No, you can't do that, because it, right, there's both...
Only the excavation.
Two different numbers.
Okay. I'm going to give you a little bit of history, and I'll, I'll give it to you again.
Okay, one minute, sir. I think staff's gonna add some overview first.
Please.
Yeah, okay. All right. So I wrote this out into the memo, but just for clarification and a quick overview for the public as well. So in April of 2018, we got complaints about a lot of construction vehicles being on the site at 117 North Street. After some time and trying to get some compliance, in January of 2019, a notice of violation was, was issued. There was also a sand and gravel operation, bringing materials to the site, as asphalt, cement, construction byproducts, excuse me, excavation and stockpiling of soil. In October of 2019, we did finally file a complaint to the Superior Court, and in January of '21, there was a stipulated judgment, which was followed by, in March of 2023, we finally did get a special use permit for reclamation of the site after there had been so much debris and construction debris and lumber and trees and shrubs and brush and stuff. So it was kind of all over the place. He never applied for the application for home occupation and contractor's storage yard, and when they did, it was actually withdrawn because there were some inaccuracies in the file. Pardon me. In April '24, due to lack of compliance and minimal staff in the town attorney's office, the case was assigned to outside counsel. And in November of '23, due to lack of progress, there was a status conference with the judge. The new counsel met with staff to discuss the status of the site and court ruling in November of '23 as well, and that we had not received any plans, and that the profuse amounts of fill had actually been brought onto the site beyond what was there prior to the reclamation special use permit being issued. April 2024, after discussing the amounts of non-permissible fill that had been brought to the site, council staff and the applicant surveyor met on site. Subsequently, a conference was held with the applicant's new counsel and surveyor. It was decided that the applicant is required to apply for an excavation permit, which is what we're hearing right now, for the current, current mounds of debris and application for home occupation permit and contractor's storage yard, which will be the next application that we hear. So that's, so at this point, we are looking at the excavation application to remove the amounts of fill that were brought in after the reclamation was approved. In short.
Thank you, very, very well put.
Want to add some more?
Yeah, basically, the, I estimate the amount that was brought in after this commission approved the reclamation project was approximately 16,000 cubic yards of materials, earth material mixed with some brick and mortar. And the applicant agreed with the court decision to remove that from the site and was directed by the court to proceed with that removal, and about 75% of that has been removed at this point. I estimate there's probably about 4,000 more yards of that material.
Were you asked to certify that through this process? How much is left and how much is removed?
We were asked to certify how much was there in, by a new field survey in February. So that's the latest information we have. So the 16,000 yards is accurate. Since then, it's, it's a constant working operation. We, we made application in May, and it's just taken a while to get here before you tonight, so I have not updated that survey, but I have been out to the site last week, and I'm telling you, it's my professional opinion, I would say there's about 75% of that 16,000 yards has been hauled offsite. And it's not in its entirety, there's still probably 25% or about 4,000 yards left, because it's a working operation.
Thank you for that.
So I can state that for the record.
Continue, yeah. That was important.
So the, really nothing to add unless people want to know about the context, because everything else kind of falls under the, the next application. There was 16,000 yards brought in after we were here last, and he's been working to get it off, and 75% gone. He's continuing to move it out on a daily basis, and I would estimate that it would be out within the next probably three to four months. But if, if we're to put a timeframe on it, I'd ask for six, just to be, to be safe. But the, the weather has finally gotten good where we can start moving it again. We've been fighting rain a little bit. But, and, and that's all been since probably March 1st, so he's been very diligent on moving that out.
And as, as you go through the process, are you reporting back to Rick, or as you go? Is there any communication with the town?
I, I, I'm in contact with, with Laurie.
Okay.
Been in contact with Georgie. There was some other issues as far as stabilization issues that the town had some concerns with, and we took care of that, oversaw that, and, and reported that to the Wetlands Commission in May, so we've been in contact with them, so we, we've been keeping...
So you're doing dialogue, and you're doing due diligence as this goes forward?
In my opinion, we are, and staff can say otherwise, but...
I think Wes is doing the best he can with the situation.
It's been, it's been a grueling, it's been going on for several years.
Yes, it has.
So, so any more you wanted to add before I open it up to the commission?
That's, that's really it, and if I've been brief, I apologize, but it's, it's basically this big pile of material there was brought in, and it's being taken out, so that's, we're trying to legitimize that through, through an excavation permit.
I think Laurie has something else, something else to add.
So basically, this just is an excavation permit, and the one thing that's odd about it is they're not digging into native ground, they're digging into the fill that has been brought into the site. So staff has requested that you just make a clarification that you agree that this is a similar use for excavation, because an excavation, as I said, is typically, you know, removing raw materials from the earth, where this is not doing that. But it, for all intents and purposes, it's the same activity.
It's excavating.
Yeah, it's, it's still excavating, they're still trucking stuff off of the site, there's still going to be, you know, back and forth trucks, and it's going to take some time, and there's noise and everything that's associated with it. I had just one recommendation for conditions of approval. Oh, site-specific conditions to add, at no time may any additional construction debris, brush, stumps, or other debris be brought onto the, to, or stored, or processed on the site.
Because we're trying to get it out, not in.
Right, well, we, we, we've been through this, so let's not go through that again.
Okay.
We, we want, we want to get the stuff off, not on.
Right. So are you gonna write that down for the secretary, you put in?
I could have him read it from here, I could give this to him, as long as I get it back.
Don't you got another...
This one is relatively simple, you know, it is excavation, this is a court stipulated requirement, and we are trying to achieve compliance, and this is the, the method to do so, one of the steps.
Looks like we got some nice technical stuff up here. Do you want to run us through a little bit? Familiarize everybody with the area?
Certainly. We have, this is an overall plan.
Just show them where North Street runs and all that.
Yep, North Street is on the left, north is to the right on this page. This is an overall map of the site. Number 117 North Street is this at the top of the page, that's a 24-acre parcel. There's an existing home and driveway that come in here, two tobacco sheds, and beyond this, off the page to the north, is, is a large tobacco field.
Presently being farmed?
Yes, yep. The tobacco sheds are full of tobacco right now.
It smells great.
And this front area is a field. There's a wooded buffer, a narrow wooded buffer through this area, and this is the second parcel to the south that's in common ownership, but it's a separate parcel known as a...
Is that about the railroad tracks? Are you showing the railroad tracks?
Yes, yeah, that's the railroad tracks, right there, to the east.
Good markers, Jorge.
So that's a 17-acre parcel. That was formerly wooded, it was cleared out in this area, stumped, and this large fill pile, I think it's probably gone off of 117 now, here's the property line between the two. This is that large fill pile right in here that we're talking about, it's about 16,000 feet. These other piles are processed mulch, leaves, ground-up bark mulch that have been processed and stored on-site in conformance with the reclamation approval back in, a year ago, March. And this area here is basically stumps from the original clearing of the land that still need to be processed. What he's been doing with the stumps is, is chopping them up, grinding them, and turning them into bark mulch.
On, on the premises.
On the premises, and, and, and we have a pond and a wetland system in here, and all of the 100-foot buffer areas have been graded and stabilized with the mulch in accordance with the plans, both a bark mulch and a leaf mulch on top, and then that's going to transition into agricultural land, more tobacco, more than likely. So that's where we are at this point relative to the, to this application.
Questions?
Just to staff, you've, you left on the dais a new approv...
That's, that's the other application.
All right, no, this was...
The home occupation.
This was the...
I know, it's really hard to keep them track.
3101.
Okay, you're right, I'm sorry. Never mind, never mind, my question will be for the next one. Thank you. Never mind.
That's okay.
You're confusing me.
Try writing the memos.
I guess.
Commissioner Petronal, please.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, I guess, to staff through the chair, but this, this activity, or this is going to be done through section 8.40 for excavation permits and so forth, and so they're going to be bound by, by that. Now, right now, I believe they have a, a wetlands permit for, for this activities? Has there been any bonds posted for ENS, or landscape, or restoration, or any of that sort, or does, or is that going to come under our purview?
Ironically, and, and gladly, most of this activity is beyond the upland review area, so the wetlands hasn't needed to be involved, however, they will be involved because there's some, some silt fencing and ENS that are down. As far as, as bonds or anything like that, that's up to you. If you want to require them, that can be required through the excavation permit. We're trying to just keep this as, as quick and simple as possible because it's a little bit different, but if you would like to post bonds, we can do that very easily.
Yeah, I, I'm inclined to believe that, you know, given the history, that we probably should consider, you know, having the, the restoration bond of some sort, and I, I know that per the conditions, they also have, I believe it allows them five years to complete all, all of the activities, and, and which is fine. I'm not sure if, if there's a way to tighten that up, but, you know, if, you know, through, through us, if we can, if we can change that, but...
We can modify the, the conditions of approval for the excavation permit itself.
Expedite this as, as much as possible. Given the history, you know, the, the site restoration, I, I feel it should be, you know, a site restoration bond, just because it's, you know, I think what we're, what the goal is, is to put the site back to where it was, basically, if I'm not mistaken, or somewhere thereabouts.
If I may, it's, it was wooded, and we're clearing it, and we've been approved to convert it to agricultural fields, so that's the plan.
Understood, yeah, understood. But, so, but in that, it should be restored to wherever the plans show, and, and I think that there should be some sort of a, a bond for that, you know, because if something should happen, or if it's not going, I mean, there, there's still, you said, about 4,000 yards of material that's got to come out of there, there's probably a little bit of grading that has to be done, and, and I'm not sure what, what the specifics, but there's probably not much for landscaping, it's probably just seeding and overseeding and so forth, and I think some of your areas are going to be, or I think you're proposing to be wood-chipped or asphalt millings and whatnot, but I, I'm inclined to just try to put some sort of a bond in place as, as more assurance to get this thing done. Again, given the history, and to try, try to work with the applicant to, to come to a closure if, if we can, I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
To Mr. Petronal, how, how do we get to that number, to the bond? If you, if we were to do that, how do you calculate that?
Well, I, I think our, our town engineer would, would use the plans and, and come up with...
Not a number we would come up with?
No, no, I, I think it'd be a fair and reasonable amount that John Cabibbo would look at, you know, the, all the information's on the plan. If there, if there's, if there's an agreed-upon removal, that's remaining of, say, 4,000 yards, what's, what's, what's that worth? Is there a dollar amount that that's worth per cubic yard?
I didn't know if we were going to have to come up with that, no, I'm glad you're...
No, no, but I, I think, I think John Cabibbo and with, with Mr. Wentworth, I think that they can come up to some sort of, you know, agreement on, on amounts and so forth.
So what will we have them restore it back to, since they're going to farm it?
Well, the plan, it's, it should be on the plans, depicted on a plan, with certain grades and elevations that they have to maintain, and I believe...
They're not going to regrow the trees.
All the information's on there, and that, and John could easily, John Cabibbo could easily...
So on this sheet, we just show final two-foot contours, and this, this shaded area is the proposed agricultural field, so that's, that's what we're showing.
That would be the finished product.
That, we would have to ultimately, you know, we're not bringing it back to wooded.
Right.
What we're doing is saying to be in conformance with these plans.
Yeah, you have a...
And that's what we need to bond on.
You have existing conditions, which was the previous sheet he showed, and then you have that is finished... you have that as finished product, it's really the difference, what it takes to get from there to there, and John, and I think he could work with Mr. Wentworth to come up with something to, to that amount that, that's agreeable, and that's, again, that's, that's my opinion.
All set?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Did you have something, Lori, I'm sorry?
No, no, go ahead.
Go ahead, Walter.
So isn't this a court-stipulated agreement?
Lori, just explain that, and go ahead and ask, through me, go ahead to ask Lori.
Yeah, through the, through the chairman, so this is a court-stipulated?
It is court-stipulated that they apply for an excavation permit, and like I said, it's not your standard excavation, which is why I didn't like, go look into the boundaries and stuff, because basically, they have to remove everything that's been put on. Now, if, if this is something that you'd like, I would, I would actually request that we would table this, so I can modify the, the conditions of approval, just so I know that they're correct, and I think that we may end up doing that with the next meeting, but that's a whole different conversation.
The next application?
The next application, rather, yes.
So, okay, so back to the court stipulation, so if they didn't comply to what the court said, so then what, even without the bond, what?
Well, they haven't complied yet.
Yeah, so six months now, so if, six months from now, wouldn't the court come back and say, what, I don't, I don't know, wouldn't?
That, that is something that I could clarify, but yes, if, if there is no movement towards compliance, then the court will probably take another action.
I'm just asking the question. I'm not denying the bond at what, what Commissioner Petronella said, but I'm just saying that we have the court on our side in this case, and I'm assuming, and that would be an extra incentive, I don't, I don't know, that's all.
I could provide a little clarification to that, well, first of all, the, what you're seeing here, as far as the agricultural land and grading, that's already approved under the reclamation plan, so, so we're not acting on that with the excavation, or even on the next application, it's basically three applications in one, that's already been voted on and approved by this commission about 18 months ago, a year ago, March.
Correct.
Are you saying the bond should have put on, put on then?
Honestly, yes.
Staff?
I don't think we've received any bonds.
Right, but I'm saying-
No, but if, if one-
So he's saying it was already approved, and now we're trying to put a bond on it?
No, we're putting a bond on the excavation.
Which, which you could do that, but not on this final plan, you know, because what you're looking at right here, this finished product on this sheet, that's what was approved already by this commission, so I just want to clarify, we have no problem doing a bond-
Clarification for me, too, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, so, you know, but as far as the removal of that last 4,000 yards, that's, I have no issue with that, okay, and I'm just trying to clarify. Secondly, as far as the court goes, there's about every eight to 10 weeks, the attorneys report to the judge, and there's status reports continuously through this for years, so the judge is not, is, is monitoring it constantly, so.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that, those two things.
Yeah, so I, if you were to desire to have this, the, the bond for site restoration and, and/or ENS, I would, I would like the ability to modify the regulations so it's all set in proper.
You don't want us to add it tonight?
I believe number 23 is already on for an ENS bond, Lori.
But the site restoration is different.
No, no, on, on this, number 22.
Yep, 20.
Nope, that's the wrong one, I thought, is that correct? Yes, number, condition number 22 is already to post a separate bond for ENS, so.
Yep, yeah, so that's already required.
And you could actually just replace 23, because there is no landscaping, you can, you could just replace that with the, with the excavation, if you want, subject to-
If you could do that, then that wouldn't allow us to, we wouldn't have to postpone it or continue it, is that what you're saying?
So you just wanted to add, add the condition that I had, and then add a condition that a site restoration bond be required? So, so bringing, well, the, the town engineer, it's the one that always says our bond, so we don't need to clarify that, site restoration bond be required for, I'm trying, I'm trying to get down to the reclamation, I guess, so you're going to be bringing down, this down to the reclamation elevation, but that is not the elevation that is the bottom of the fill?
No, no, it is to the bottom of the fill.
The bottom of the fill is, is the reclamation elevation?
Thereabouts, yeah.
Okay. So how about site restoration bond be required for removal of all mounds, or all material collection, I guess, I'm not sure, this, this is why I don't like to wordsmith it.
That's okay, if you want to, if you don't feel comfortable doing it, Lori, if you wait.
No, no, it's not that I don't feel comfortable, I just like to make sure that it's worded correctly, so.
We're going to be putting it right in between 22 and 23, right, with the other bonds?
Site restoration be required for removal of all material.
rewrite in 23, okay.
How about site restoration bond be required for removal of all material collected post-reclamation approval?
That covers it.
Is that good?
Yeah.
John, you good with it? John?
Yeah.
You good with it? No, that satisfies your concern or something?
And we, yeah, and we already have the ENS bond on this one. I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
And this was a public hearing, yes, so, if there's any more questions, now I'm going to open it up, I'm sorry, Mr. Ru, I'm sorry.
No, I got a quick, quick one, isn't this the same application that was granted in March of 23 that we're talking about? It says application for special use permit was granted for excavation, reclamation of the site.
Yes, but-
Are we doing this all over again?
So subsequently, they brought in like 10 to 20 feet of fill, Wes, could you go back to the-
Certainly.
To the last one, thank you.
Again.
So, so all-
Right in this area here.
Yeah, that, that became a mountain-
Okay.
-beyond the reclamation area, so after we asked them to remove all of this debris and-
They brought in twice as much more.
They brought in twice as much more material.
Does that make that permit null and void at that point, is that why it has to do with this?
No, it's still required, so this is going to bring it down to the reclamation, and the reclamation is going to continue.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so at this point, sir, I'm going to ask to see if there's anybody in the public that would like to come up, I don't know, I doubt there is, so you don't have to move, unless, anybody out in the public, in the audience, I'm sorry, tonight, that would like to come up and speak for or against application, public hearing 3100, I'm sorry, 3101, public hearing 3101, for or against, anybody else, for or against, seeing none, obviously there's nobody here, so I'm closing that, do I still have to say it three times?
No.
Okay, all right, so, any more? Commissioner Petronella, please.
Yeah, do, do we want to consider stipulating a, a time or an end date on, on this, on this work to get done, because the excavation permit, I believe, or the, would allow them five years, and I'll be honest with you, you know, it's, it's been five years or so, and it's getting worse, and worse and worse, so, and I want to be reasonable, I don't want to, you know, just say, you got six months or a year, but we got to give them something, something reasonable, I think, to put, to put on, and if it's within our purview, I think it's something that we ought to discuss and consider, because I think five years is really too long, you know, it's already been well over five years.
So, is that amount of time in there because of change of seasons, and you can't get in there certain times of the year because of the mud, why is it five years?
I think that's your regulation, yeah, isn't, isn't that standard?
Okay, so hang on, Lori?
Because you've got to remember what an excavation permit is, it's, it's excavating material out of the ground, and that usually is phased and takes years and years and years, this is an excavation to remove debris that was deposited without any permits.
So you're saying what our regulation is talking about something different, or-
It's, it's a diff, it's a different-
A different operation?
Yeah.
Generally, a lot more volume of material than we're dealing with here.
Right, so you don't need as much?
Usually you don't start an excavation permit.
So, let me ask you, sir, what do you think's a fair time?
I would love it to coincide with the reclamation timing.
And that is on record?
That is on record, and I've been going to try to get it for you here, I have the If you want to continue with questions, I'll try to, I'll try to find it.
You got any more, okay.
So, if, if that was approved in 23, wouldn't that be 28, that it would?
That, that was a special, it was a special permit, not an excavation permit.
Oh, okay.
That was a site-
But Georgie finds it before you.
Yeah, I have the, I have the approval letter, but I can't find the timing, that, that was a five-year permit, it's for the reclamation.
So what was the?
And that was from March of 23, so.
And that, we get to eight, 28, is that what it'll be?
So that's from March 13th, 2023, five years.
I, I suggest two years.
That, that would be fine, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah?
Everybody seems to be in consensus with two years?
That brings us to 26, to get this part done, and then he has till 28 to get the other part done.
And I, and I expect it'll be done long before then, but that's, that's only my anticipation.
Well, the reason why, like I said, I asked, because I didn't know if there was certain, because where we live here, sometimes you can't go in there, and that's why I was wondering why.
Yep, yeah, we, we did struggle with, with wet weather.
And you said that.
First, first four or five months of the year, yeah.
This, this is stockpiled material, it could-
It's already loose.
Yeah, it's already loose, and can usually be, you know, handled with a loader and all that, year-round, for the most part, unless you get a severe cold.
They can put the big stone down, so they can drive on it and everyone's-
Correct.
All right, so, any more questions, any more?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like clarification, what you would like this special use permit timing to be, two years?
It's going to be the same as the previous applica, right? No, no, less, three?
It'll be two years.
It's two, two years from today.
Two years from the approval of this one.
Thank you.
Yeah, which will then give the other one another year or something, yeah. Right? Not adding it up.
That's a drunk shot.
John's good over there, you kidding?
September 12.
All right, so when Lori's set, we'll-
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion made, seconded by Walter, motion made by Commissioner DeGray, discussion, none, no discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner DeGray, oh.
Sorry.
I'm the second man.
The second man.
And the discussion, we discussed it already, chewed it all up, Mr., I'm sorry, oh, we got to close, we're closing.
We got a vote on it.
Yep, yep. So I made sure I get that right. Show of hands, a favor closing the public hearing? Okay, oh, okay, and when, this time I'll entertain a motion when they're ready for approval of application, and it'll be on 01, 3101, I'm sorry, yes, 3101.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application, I'm sorry, application number PH3101, for special use permit for excavation activities, per Section 8.40, Joseph LaCory, applicant owner, map 93, lot 15, and map 100, lot 6, I-1 zone, you know, this, this, with the following, there'll be 32 conditions, there's 30 listed right now, and condition number 23 to be changed to read as follows, site restoration bond be required for removal of all material deposited post-reclamation approval, public hearing number 3054, and two new conditions, which would be number 31, at no time may any additional construction debris, brush, stumps, or other debrays be brought to deposited, stored, or processed on the site, and condition number 32, new condition would be, a special use permit shall expire in two years' time on, on September 12th, 2026.
Second. Second, discussion, seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Secretary.
Frank Alimo.
For.
Linda DeGray.
For.
Kenneth Holinsky.
For.
Joseph Muley.
For.
Pat Hooper.
For.
Walter Crizell.
For.
And John Petronella's for, seven up, seven out, approved.
Take that away.
Take that.
When you're ready, take it down.
Yep. Next application is, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, September 12th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in the Town Hall Council chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following applications, public hearing number 3102, 117 North Street, special use permit for the operation of a construction office and associated facilities per Section 6.20, and a home occupation professional office per Section 4.50.5, Joseph LaCory, applicant owner, map 93, lot 15, I-1 zone.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, the applicant, please state your name for the record.
Again, for the record, Wes Wentworth, Wentworth Civil Engineers, Lebanon, Connecticut, a professional engineer and soil scientist here on behalf of the owner and applicant, Joe LaCory.
And Lori, would you like to do the same overview, or?
I'll just even brief her.
Brief her, that's good.
So basically, exact same history, this was required from day one, that he'd seek a home occupation and an, and contractor's storage yard, so what I tried to do when I was reviewing this was not looking at all the issues, I was just looking at this just as home occupation, contractor's storage yard, or construction storage yard, and that, that in itself is a quagmire, but I, I'm, I think at this point, I will let Wes just give a quick overview, and, and then I could have, I'll have more comments.
Okay, thank you, Wes.
Okay, we're back to the existing conditions, overall plan, what were, this application involves only this 24-acre parcel, notice 117, because we're here for a home occupation and construction-
Construction yard.
Construction yard permitting, which only will occur on number 117, this 24-acre parcel, so orientations all still the same, again, here's that existing home, there's currently an office in the front of it, where Mr. LaCory operates out of there, he has one employee, who's his admin assistant, and, and himself in there, and then currently he has trucks and parking and other activities back to the rear here, so let me just go to the next sheet here, this is, just kind of removes all those piles and existing things. Currently, as I stated before, there's an agricultural field that runs along the frontage of number 117, and there's a wooded tree line that's- And there's a wooded tree line that's left in this area that acts as a buffer. These are tall, full-size tobacco sheds in here that provide buffering from the west. This is all that existing tobacco field here at the top of the page. The activities, again, the home office is up here in the front in the existing building, and all the construction yard activities are here in the in the middle of the site. I think I have a little better blow up here. See which is the best one, this one here. This is just a larger scale of just number 117. Again, north is still to the right. Here's the existing home, existing driveway access, which is Millings, and proposed employee parking here just to the east of the existing tobacco barn. In this area would be truck and trailer parking. This the longer spaces for his dump trailers, shorter spaces for the tri-axle trucks, dump trucks. In this area right here, he has an existing concrete bunker, basically made of the concrete blocks, large six-foot blocks that he stores salt in it, winter road salt. It's covered with just a a vinyl top. And then he wants to expand and just put some more similar bunkers in here uncovered for basically brings a truck in at night loaded, and sometimes it needs to go to a different place. And it's a few days until he's needs to reload that truck and go. And it would be either earth material, stone, possibly landscape bulk mulch, things like that. But that would be stored on a concrete slab within blocked-off bulk bunkers.
To be concrete slab with the bunkers sitting on them.
Correct, yeah, open to the air. So that's that's what's proposed in here. And again, employee parking with two or three spots. I can't see here, honestly. Up here at the house, they're they're existing for that. So again, it's home office use, which meets all the requirements as far as percentage of the home. Mr. LaCory, this is his residency, lives there. There is something in there. We are not doing a new septic system. That was already done before Mr. LaCory bought the parcel. We just had to show a future replacement area per health code, which we show. We did test bits, worked with the health department, and showed that there's a suitable replacement area if if and when that septic system fails. And again, everything down slope here will be the agricultural field. And everything just sheet drains off. It's very flat through here to the north, works its way down to a wetland system, and northerly to an existing pond that he uses for irrigation on the tobacco. He's permitted to do that with the with the agricultural department. He's worked with him. So that's that's what's proposed. Take any comments or questions?
I think Lori wanted to add something before we. If you're not ready, Lori, you want us to continue? Did you want to add something before we?
No, I don't want to add. I have some conversation to have, but I don't need to add anything.
You want to have, I'll open it up to questions first. Go ahead.
Just clarification because of my question that I had is you gave us this, and it says construction yard operation is seven to five. But then in the site specific, it says 4:30 to 4:30. Are we going to seven to five? 16 says 4:30 to 4:30.
That is the conversation, one of the conversations we need to have.
Oh, okay, that's where my confusion was. All right.
So do you want me to to keep going with that?
It's going to expedite the process tonight, go right ahead.
Okay, so let me make sure I'm on the right page. So again, this is a requirement of the courts to move this into compliance. So in our regulations, we only have a reference to construction yard under 6.20. Now, if I go into construction yards in definitions, which we don't, of course, have anything in our regulations, but a construction yard is an area on or immediately adjacent to a major construction or demolition site used on a temporary basis for the parking and storage of equipment used in the project and the storage and preparation of materials and other items used in the project. Such yard may include construction offices and such shops as are necessary. So basically, it's like if you've got a construction site, you've got, you know, you're building something.
Like a staging area.
Yeah, thank you, a staging area. There you go. So that's really kind of what that is. We don't really have what we have. What I consider this is a contractor's storage yard, which, where'd it go? The lighting is reflecting on me here, okay. A contractor's storage yard, an unenclosed portion of the lot or parcel upon which a construction contractor maintains its principal office or a permanent business. Designation of the lot or parcel as a contractor's storage yard would allow this area to be used to store and maintain construction equipment and other materials you customarily used in the trade carried on by the construction contractor. The entire lot or parcel would then be classified as a contractor's storage yard and would be required to conform to all applicable zoning district standards and other legislative regulations. So to me, this is more of a contractor's storage yard. He's basically got more often than not, so let let me just backtrack a little bit. I visited the site this afternoon, and Joe LaCory was there, and we had a very pleasant conversation. And he's like, I don't want to store things here anymore. It's not worth it. And the other thing that I noticed is that the bins that had been there for storage were gone. The 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 big concrete blocks, it was gone. I don't know where it went, but it's not there. And then, so he said, you know, basically what we do is we're going to store like probably five trucks, and then we take the trucks, we go to a site and pick up material, whatever the material is, and then we deliver it to another site that is requesting it, and then we come home. Sometimes we have a little bit of extra product in the trucks, and that's when we'll drop it on the site. So again, the 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 business plan has changed a little bit.
Sir, sir, excuse me, if you're going to come up to the diet to the table, can you please identify yourself?
Yeah.
For the record? You can sit right there.
I'm Attorney John Clifford, by the way.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, Mr. Wentworth is more familiar. He's going to carry the ball here, but if there's any way I can assist, I'm here.
Appreciate that, oh, great. I've seen you come up a couple of times, but not that you came up again, so I'd rather have you on the record.
That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, so so anyway, so so Rick and I were talking about it, and I said, you know, why do we have? Why do we have to have the materials in the bins? I mean, why don't why don't we just do an area of storage? And that way, we just know this is the area we demarcated in the in the field and on the plans. And that way, if it's in the bin or if it's a pile, what difference does it make to us? As long as we.
I like the bins because it's neater and cleaner.
Well, I think the bins are usually for like more like erodible soils and stuff, I would think, you know, just, I don't know. Right now, he has little pea pea gravel amount of that. He's got some.
It's like Plaza Trucking. When you go into Plaza, they have different kinds of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, well, I don't know what I don't know what Plaza, I've never been there, so I can't say. But I mean, to me, I thought it would be easier for him and for us to look at compliance issues if he just had an area of storage. So what we were thinking was. All right, yeah.
You want the mouse?
You know what she's thinking?
Basically, we were thinking, you know, okay, just basically like this area. He could have storage. It could be in bins, it could be on mounds or whatever. We just, he's got to limit the, he can't be bringing in brush and debris and things like that. But he has this whole area of storage. Now, I didn't discuss this with him, but it just seems to me it would be easier for everybody if that were the case. I think Wes is agreeing.
I I completely concur, and he may still use those bins. Again, it's completely buffered from the road with that.
Yeah.
You can't see the the bin.
You can't you can't see.
You can't see any of this area.
Aesthetically, so you, they look nice.
All this area is buffered from the street.
Yeah, it it you cannot see any of this from the street.
Okay.
So so that was the first thing. So I was like, so so Rick and I were talking, and it's like, let's just make this easy for him and for for us for compliance issues. As long as the materials are are classified and clarified as to what can be brought in, like you can't bring brush, no trees, no, you know, nothing like that. And then have the plan revised to show just the exact area that it is. If you want to show the the bins, that's great. If they move, it really doesn't matter. And then and then just don't show any of the mounds or anything for the actual final plans. But the question here is, and this is what Linda was getting to, sorry, I got here in a long way. But they would like to operate 4:30 to 4:30. If this is considered a construction yard, we actually have a charter that says it has to be from seven to five.
If you want to go 4:30 AM to 4:30 PM?
That was their, that that is what they would like to have.
I can.
And that would be because he's got to get out to job sites? Is that what?
Wes could probably answer that better than I.
You know, this is this is an I-1 industrial zone. So what he's asking for, those hours are just for the trucks to get in, start, and leave, not for any of this storage material loading onsite. It's just the trucks have to leave by 4:30 to get where they're going. He he travels all over Connecticut and New England, and often he has to be in Stanford for, you know, these guys have to be on there 6:30 in the morning, 6:00, 6:30. So that that that's the reason for the timing. If you want to, if if there's concerns of operation of the the construction yard beyond the trucks to a later time, open to that. I don't know if there's leeway to do that, but but that's that's the problem is is. And I would say that other industrial areas, say warehouse.
Well, that's what I was going to say, this is an I-1 zone.
It's an I-1 zone. Those trucks aren't limited. They're running 24 hours a day at a warehouse.
That's right.
Soon, correct? So I would, we would just ask for that, you know, that not to be restricted to that 7 o'clock because we're in the same zone as all these warehouses within half mile or mile here.
I just drove to New York City the other day. Took us two hours. We were in traffic on 95, it was terrible. So I can imagine having to drive to Stanford in the morning in a truck.
Yeah, it would be fun.
It was terrible, yeah.
Took me an hour and a half to get to New Haven.
Three in the morning, wow.
Right, so.
So it's reasonable, it's understandable.
So we could have no limit on the trucks if it would be ideal, you know, then that's simple because that would be equivalent to what all the other I-1 operations, running trailer trucks. Again, I'm assuming, but I don't believe you have restrictions on. And I don't, and honestly, I think we did some research, and I don't think they can be restricted by by state statute. We did some research on that about 12 months ago.
So I would imagine when he leaves there, he's going to go right out Park onto 190 because you can't go down, there's no trucks allowed on north anyway. So when you're talking about in the morning, interrupting.
Well, he's going to have to drive down north because they're on North Street.
Right, he's going to go down north and then down Park to 190. He can't go any farther on.
Yeah, he's not going to go left.
Not going to go left, but when he goes right, he has to turn left.
That's correct.
Can't can't drive trucks on on north, so.
Okay, oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
Right, no trucks on north, so.
So I just.
Takes away like him driving through neighborhoods at 5:00 in the morning, too. Put that out there.
Quite honestly, the the, for you to just say, well, the contractor's storage yard is is enough of a similar use, but it's not exactly the same as a construction yard because we don't have it in our regulations. So again, we're looking for that similar use thing. And really, what the difference is, is the timing. If if you consider this a construction yard, the charter calls for it to run between 7:00 and 5:00 Monday through Saturday.
We would have no problem with that if if that makes sense to the commission.
Seven, well, they needed to get out before 7:00.
I'm saying for the construction yard itself, not the trucks.
I got you, I'm sorry. Yep, that's, I I can understand the reason for the trucks to get out.
Yeah.
So can we put it in as a condition that one's operation can start at 4:30 or 4:00, and the other one starts?
That we do need to put it in as a condition. It's it's a matter of which, what timing are you going to put it in?
The applicant, I think, what he's asking for, for the truck.
It's 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 your decision. It's not, it's not their decision, it's not my decision.
Let's open it up to the rest of the members and see what they think. Anybody who's got a, Walter?
All right, so let's get back to the bins. So if the truck leaves at 4:30, he's not going to load anything from the bins.
That's correct, truck would be preloaded.
The bins will just be there to unload, to if he has leftover to put in, and then and then they'll do something during the construction hours.
Correct, all that will be done more than likely in the afternoon preload for the morning.
And back to the bins, I think the bins are neater and easier than just putting a pile of pea stones in the middle where you got two sides on the back, and the payloader comes in, and the back acts as a a way to load it. So to me, I think the bins would be the way to to leave it.
I I completely agree, but I I really like Lori's solution of just designating a storage area where he can bin or not bin, depending on what what his situation is, so.
We'll leave it up to the.
Because. Actually, when you're when you're relo scooping up that stuff, that's where the bins come in and make it neat.
Yeah, I mean, some of the mounds that were out there wouldn't fit in in the bins that they had out there. But again, the bins are no longer there, so I'm not sure what happened with them.
You know, I would leave the bins on the plan and just add it an area that just could be for overflow or something.
Just general storage.
General storage. And then on the hours, if that's what it, you know, like you said, if he's got to go to Stanford, I'd rather go to Stanford at 4:30 in the morning than 7:30 or 7:00 in the morning because he won't get there until noon.
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else?
For the hours, so we're saying the trucks would be 4:30 to 4:30, and the yard itself would be 7:00 to 5:00, correct?
Yes, but honestly, I would like to just not have a limit on the trucks, just to keep it cleaner. Because this is the third time we've attempted to, this is our third round of submitting this application, trying to get through, and this is no fault of this commission. And this 4:30 to 4:30 is kind of a leftover from that. We did research, we looked into state statute, and if 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 you, a town can't control motor vehicles and timing on motor vehicles leaving. That's that's by state statute, that can't be done. So that's what we found out through research about a year ago. So it's kind of an old thing. I just assume remove the truck timing, and then because, you know, they have to leave when they have to leave. You know, they have to be on a job. They're construction dump trucks. Those generally start at 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning, and they sometimes have to be two, three hours away, so.
Typically, I think since I've been on his board, we kind of tried to stay away from hours of operation. We we kind of stayed away from it, is probably why.
Yeah.
If there's a case study on it or something.
And again, it's 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 hard to remember sometimes. We have a single-family home.
We've had it come up before.
Yeah.
Hours of, and we are always like, no, we're not going to tell you how long.
It's a single-family home, it's a big farm, but it's all an I-1 zone, you know? And across the street, a solar farm. You know, there's a commercial building next door.
It's a commercial building.
There's the railroad tracks, and so it's 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 not harming anybody.
There's no other residential units, I think, at least that side of the tracks.
Right.
Yeah, I'd be a fan of staying away from hours of operation.
Yeah, we always typically on this, since I've been on, we didn't want to dictate the people. You know, and I think it's probably because it's out there, like you said, in the statutes, and there's probably been some case study.
Yeah.
Because we've never imposed that on people. Anybody, Lori, you have anything else?
No, I added just some additional conditions of approval. My recommendation is that if if the commission is agreeable to the, basically, the location of the storage area. I know that Mr. LaCory has some very large concrete footings for large lights. And I noticed that he's got a couple left that he's not using out front. So apparently, he's going to make them decorative out front. But I was thinking they would make a very good location on the ground for the, if if we use perhaps maybe the the barns as the starting point and then.
Yeah, if you look on our plan now, you can see the hatched area is the proposed agricultural limit. So it would be this trapezoidal shape is this this area. So we have, again, employee parking, the tobacco sheds there. This is the truck parking area. And then basically, the remainder of this area that's not crosshatched, that's designated to be agricultural land, would be that that storage area.
Yeah.
And again, that's all completely buffered from the road. It's tucked in, you can't even see that from the driveway. So it's it's the most easterly point, farthest from where you might even be able to see and driving by. You wouldn't you wouldn't be able to see that.
So my recommendation is if the commission is. So, my recommendation is if the commission is, is willing to do this, if, if we can table this, I could modify the, the conditions based on whatever timeframes you decide. Wes could go back and do a final plan, that just shows the demarcation, and how it's going to be shown on the plans and in the field. And, and also take down, take out the, um, second parcel from this application, just because it's only for one location, one site. That way, we can just get the conditions correct, and we'll take, take everything off that isn't needed.
Yep.
So, we're not gonna see the lot to the east?
That's correct.
Right, because it is not part of this application.
Okay.
So, it should not be included on the final plan.
So, you would like, staff would like to table it tonight, to get you caught up in the conditions?
Well, because you usually like to see the final plan anyway, if there's any modifications, and that way we could, I could--
Now, the hours and the trucks, we're just gonna take that off, is everybody in agreement?
Yeah, I agree.
I'm agree.
Now-- I, I just have a question, Lori.
Yeah.
Section 6.20 is construction offices and facilities. Are we not falling under that, is that what you're saying?
I, I think that you, I, I think that we can have you fall under that, because we're not going to regulate the trucks--
Okay.
The timing of the trucks.
Okay, and are, is there, are there time constraints required on, for the operation of the--
Well, if, if we're going to--
I guess, I just like to get a--
Right, well, that's, that's why, that's why I want to do this.
A consensus.
So, if, if, if this is a construction yard, then those hours of operations will, will have to be complied with for the actual construction and, and moving of materials.
But, we're--
So--
We're, we're applying right now, under section 6.20, construction offices and facilities.
Right.
Are you saying our plans don't meet that, is that the problem?
No, 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 they do, although--
You keep saying construction--
No, well, so, so, in my mind, you're not really a construction operation. It's really a contractor's storage yard, which, which we don't have. So, I've probably complicated it by saying that. I mean, quite honestly, I just don't think you are the con-- the construction yard, that per definition, but I think that--
Staging area you described.
Right, but I think that it's perfectly fine to--
A construction office and facility is what you, you said defined as a, as a temporary?
That's, that's, that's what I found in the APA Planner's Dictionary, because--
And that, and that's under construction offices and facilities? I thought you had looked up--
Well, so, I was suggesting that it's, it's really a contractor's storage yard.
Well, y- you had read the definition of construction yard.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm saying we're applying under construction offices and facilities. So, I don't think that that definition applies. Again, this is, this is the section in, in the Enfield Regulations we've applied under.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes. No, construction yard.
6.20 is titled what?
Right, 6.20.
Is called what? I'm sorry, I don't have the zoning rights. I, I thought it was construction offices and facilities.
Under the uses in the I-1, we have construction offices and facilities. It's a special use permit, it doesn't have any definition.
Okay. So, we're gonna table this, and you guys want to do this offline with email and phone call?
Well, it's, 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 I want a discussion in front of the commission.
Oh, okay, that's fine, no, that's fine, I didn't know-- If we were making you do like--
I mean, this is what you applied under, only the question is, is, I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying it doesn't really fit, but it, it's similar enough. So, it's as similar as we can get without a contractor's storage yard definition or use.
So, it, you know, we have certain things we can choose of, of uses, that we can apply, either as of right or special permit. So, when we met with staff and the town attorney, our, myself, our attorney, we came up with that, that the closest thing we could match was construction offices and facilities.
Right.
That does not have a definition per--
Right.
Your regulations. However, it's up to this commission, in my opinion, to interpret your regulations.
Exactly.
Not me, not Lori. So, what I would like, some direction from the commissioner consensus, is how we've applied, because again, the attorney and staff, when we met this spring, this is the consensus we came to, that this is a construction office and facility.
Well, I think you should use the consensus that you came to with the attorneys and staff.
I agree.
Okay.
I don't want to get in the middle of that.
I'm fine with that.
You guys are all agreeable?
I was trying to be nicer to you, but it's just complicated things.
I don't want to get confused, sorry.
That's more over my pay grade.
Right, I don't wanna, you know, so, are there any restrictions, are there more restrictions going this way that I'm not seeing?
Um, I think that, that, then you will have to abide by the 7 to 5, Monday through Saturday hours, per the, per the charter.
So, that's my question, so--
For, we're, we're gonna say for activities onsite. So, I think we've all, we've all agreed that we, we're not going to regulate the timing for the trucks, basically, either on state statute, or the fact that it's, the, it seems to me that the regular--
I think that's what we came into conformist--
Yeah, I think so, too.
With everybody, and it's a big pictures, I would just assume stick with that, even if there are--
Yep, that's fine with me.
Our operation hours restrictions.
Absolutely.
That, that's fine, we're aware.
You guys came to an agreement, I'd say stick with it.
Yeah.
But like, like you said, we were just trying to find the best fit.
No, okay, I didn't understand why we were trying to go the other way, you were trying to eliminate that.
My bad, I was trying to--
No, it's not bad, I, I was confused.
So, there's no timing on the trucks?
Right, we're not gonna do timing on the trucks, because they're just like all the other trucks, like--
I think it's just the yard.
All of the Coca-Cola and all of those places, deliveries all the time.
Captain Commissioner Cruzel has a question.
So, okay, yeah, so, I'm just gonna clarify that, the trucks, no problem, but, the beep 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 only from 7 to 5.
Correct.
Beep 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 meaning the payloader.
Correct.
So, okay.
I think we're in consensus. And then, perhaps Wes, you and I could, after this, of, based on some of the other site-specific conditions, if we could narrow down what the materials are going to be, and what they're not going to be--
Yep.
Before the next meeting, and then we'll do that.
Alright, so, what we're left with is, we need to iron out material types. I have to separate the number 117 alone, a separate plan--
Yep.
And, storage area.
Yep. And see if we could use those--
Remove truck timing.
So, those, the footings for those big lights, that, that really would be really--
With physical demarcation.
Yeah, because, I mean, that's not gonna move, it's not that, you can't put little posts in the ground, it's gonna get knocked over, so--
Okay. Alright, I'm clear, thank you for your patience. I just didn't want to have to come back--
Motion to table.
Anything else, we, anybody have anything else before we table this?
Okay.
Motion to table.
Show hand.
Second.
Second, it, seconded by Commissioner Meway, and Walter made the motion.
Thanks for-- Okay, we'll see you guys in a couple weeks. Thank you very much, we appreciate it, we'll be back in two, two weeks.
Yep, yep.
And you guys could, you've got two weeks to go back and forth and clean it up, and--
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do the conditions together.
Yeah.
How's that?
Yes, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much, thank you for all the work you put into this, and staff as well.
But it's not closed. Thank you.
Thank you for finding those plans, Georgia.
Wish I should have moved this one up and let them come--
I was like, can't we put this on the thumb drive, and she's like, yes, we can.
I didn't even think about it.
Yay. Pardon? Oh. There you go, they've waited a long time.
You know, and I apologize, I, I just gotta find my agenda here.
You need another one, I got one.
So, um-- It's gonna be a public hearing, 3103, Mr. Secretary.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting of Thursday, September 12th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, public hearing number 3103. 130 Elm Street, Unit 50, application for a special use permit for a Class III liquor store. Nishant Patel, applicant freshwater, MZL plus KPR, owners MAP 57, Lot 329, business regional zone.
Are the applicants here, come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your patience and waiting, I should have thought and brought you guys up before, but--
No worries, just to clarify, my--
Name and address both are record, please.
Yeah, Mehl Shah, 96 Penwood Crossing, Glassambury.
May take a second to warm up.
Jay Shah, 39 Buckland Street, Manchester, Connecticut.
Good evening. Do you want to give us a little overview of what you're--
Yes.
Applying for tonight?
Absolutely, so, we are requesting a special permit to relocate an existing package store, Good Times Package Store, to a new location at 130 Elm Street, Unit 50. The relocation is, we have permission from the existing owner, and a contract for, to appear for the special permit. The permit, since it's moving, is no, we're not restricted by the, the maximum liquor permits for the town. And, for the unit itself, it's in the plaza where Home Depot is, so--
State Line Plaza.
Yes, State Line Plaza, and we would not be making any exterior changes to the plaza, because we don't own the property, the change is gonna be inside. Interior, we're gonna be bringing an open layout, fresh new floors, new gondolas, new cooler, trying to bring more varieties to the, to this, to this area, and our experience in the, in the industry.
You say Good Times Package Store, you said Pearl Street?
Yes.
Good Times Package Store from Pearl Streets, permit?
Yes.
And the business, or just a sell of the permit? Is it the same, same operators?
No, different operator.
Different operator.
Different operators, yeah.
So, when you say you're moving the permit, so, so you don't have to apply for the permit?
We do.
You do?
Yes, we do, yeah. That's, that, with the liquor division.
You're saying that in reference to how many permits we have in Enfield?
Yes.
Okay, you confused me a little bit there.
Okay, no, it's moving the permit, so, you still apply for the permit, we just say--
Just this number of permits in Enfield aren't going up?
No.
One package store is closing up down here, and another one is opening up in the plaza?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, staff?
Um, so this is probably the most simple application on your agenda tonight.
I wish I had, you know, and I apologize again, I would have brought you guys up first.
That's okay, that's okay.
They satisfy the distance requirement, regulations are satisfied, no departmental concerns in terms of their relocation. So, the Good Times Package Store in Thompsonville will be closing. They are op-- opening a new package store under a different name, in the State Line Plaza now. So, with that being said, the licenses allowed in the town are based off population. I believe our max is 16, so we are not affecting that list, we're just closing one and opening a new one under a different name.
Are we at 16 now?
Yes.
We are.
We are maxed out, yes. Unless our population increases by 5,000, it goes by census.
Yep. Understood, anything else?
Nope, it's straightforward.
Any questions from the commission? Ms. Julinski?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to know, I wanted to clarify the location of your new store. Is it the Old Verizon?
Yes.
Store, so, so it's just north of Home Depot?
North of Home Depot.
Between Home Depot and TGI Friday?
Exactly.
Right in there, okay, very good.
Corner, corner location.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Is it gonna be called the same name, when you're out there?
No, we're, we're debating, more, whiskey, wine liquor mart, one of the person has, whiskey wine, so we're debating what to call it, but, yeah.
Look, that name's been around a long time, that package store.
I, yeah.
Good times?
Yeah, good times, it's been there for a long time.
Had some good times.
Yeah, good, good times. Got a good customer base, should keep the name.
Maybe, we will, I guess, yeah.
Uh, anything else? You got anything? Okay, so, at this time, there is obviously nobody else in the building, other than us and staff and the applicants, so, I'm gonna say anybody want to come up and speak one time? Nobody up, nobody's here, um, so I'll close--
A motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay. Is there any more discussion?
I see.
Entertaining motion to approve, uh, public hearing?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve public hearing, number 3103, 130 Elm Street, Unit 50, application for a special use permit for a Class III liquor store. Nishant Patel, applicant freshwater, MZL plus KPR, owners MAP 57, Lot 329, BR zone, with the following 16 conditions listed.
Second. Second, is, I need a discussion. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Secretary.
Yes, Frank Alamo--
Four.
Linda DeGray--
Four.
Kenneth Julinski--
Four.
Joseph Mullay--
Four.
Pat Hooper--
Four.
Walter Cruzel--
Four.
And John Petronella is four, seven zip.
Okay, unanimous, it's approved, congratulations.
Alright, thank you, thank you so much, everybody. Alright, have a good night.
Thank you. Any old business? Oh, I'm sorry. That's alright. You guys, good? Lori, you good? Old business? Staff, old business, staff, no, nothing? New business? No new business. Other business? Any other business? Monkey business? Okay, applications to be received, I think we have them on our table here, correct, Lori?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They are.
A little bit about them? Oh, I'm sorry, you guys don't have it?
No, we don't give it to everybody, but if we get, if you want every-- We never used to hand it out ever, so--
There was a request for it, right?
Yes, so, we give it to the leaders, alright.
You want to go over them?
Yes, I'll read them into the record. PH 3104, 98 or 90C Elm Street, application for special use permit for a drive-through and a modification to allow two additional tenants, Willowbrook Enfield LLC, applicant Elm Street Enfield LLC, owner MAP 43, Lot 27, BR zone, and just so you know, that's the Verano Marijuana Cannabis Distribution Center out back--
I thought we were gonna do that administratively.
The, but they're coming back for a drive-through.
Oh, okay.
So, and yes, we did, so--
Yes, we did, I thought, I knew that.
Yeah. Public hearing 3105, 140 Brewster Road, application for a special use permit to park commercial vehicle per section 3.30.13. Lorenzo and Hannah Lewis, owner applicant, MAP 111, Lot 158, R33 zone. And PH 3106, 160 Abbey Road, application for a special use permit, site plan review for a farm store. John and Ashley Collins, applicants, John Collins owner, MAP 85, Lot 10, R88 zone, and that's basic. And that is it for tonight.
Let's see, anybody got anything? No, not yet, we have opport--
Just, just one thing. In the past, we've always just listed those applications--
The applications to be received?
To be received on the agenda, just for a heads up for the whole commission, I don't know if you want--
I think there was a time issue, and Commissioner Lynch asked them to be on the desk, because sometimes she'll receive them before the packet, right, Lori?
Yeah, so, so basically, sometimes we'll have it to be received, and, and then we'll do the agenda, and we will get something in right after it or something, so, then, it's, so they're not all on the agenda, so that makes it--
You know.
We work hours on the agenda, hours, so, I mean, we, right, Lori?
If you would like, would everybody like a copy of this?
Days. Days on the agenda.
Days on the agenda.
Days. We work weeks on the agenda.
Commissioner Lynch asked to have it on the table, but what happens is, when a packet's made, and by the time a meeting starts, things can change.
I'm just saying, in the past, this is, that was, it didn't always, it wasn't always current, but there was always a something that you could.
Yeah, it just, well, that way, it just, it kind of was misleading. It's like, because, I mean, we could get something. We could get something in after we file the agenda, and, you know, on Friday, and it's not on there, so.
But that, in the past, like I said, they were listed, and then, you know, if anything else came in.
It's up to you guys, if you want it, or we can just email it to you.
Can you just throw them on the table before the meeting?
Whatever.
I just think that if you put them on the agenda, then if then it's not on the agenda, then somebody could come back saying, why wasn't my application?
It's received by statute, so it doesn't matter if it's on the agenda or not.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's why I think it'd be better not to have it.
Do a heads up for.
You got a clock that starts.
It just makes it easier for our internal process, because.
What's easier for you?
To have the way it is right now, than having it on the agenda.
Leave it the way it is.
I didn't know I was the only one.
What we can do is email you these, how's that?
Or we could put them in your packet.
Or just, you could even throw them on the desk when we, you know, for the meeting.
Well, I'm just saying, we can do that, but that's extra paper.
Shoot an email before you come in. Look at your email.
We could do that.
That's easier said.
There you go.
Did you combine yours?
Yeah.
How'd you do that? You have to go to IT?
No, you just add it to the phone.
Really? No kidding.
We have to, we've got to tell.
Put that list in the online packet, too.
The online packet?
Yeah. Yeah.
So opportunities and unresolved issues. We just talked about that. Is this an opportunity and unresolved issue?
There you go.
It's resolved.
Resolved.
Before we even got there. Okay, executive session. You want to read that into the record?
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, you want to go ahead?
Sure.
Yeah, I think we should put it in the record first.
Yeah, sure. So the commission met this evening, am I on? Yes. I had a special meeting at 6:15 on September 12, 2024. Oh, my goodness. I don't have, who was there? So who was there? Mark Serato, Attorney Mark Serato, myself, Lori Witten, Rick Rochelli, let's see, Walter Crizell, Joe Mullay, Linda DeGray. Frank Alamo was like, you gave me this look like.
He always called me Frank Toronto.
I know, but you gave me this look. Ken Holinsky, John Petronella, Patrick Hooper, and Christian D'Antonio. On the agenda was Jarmark Real Estate LLC v ZBA et al., being 147-151 Abbey Road, docket number LND, HHD, CV 23, 616-8303-S mediation, and B, discussion on sidewalk at 147-151 Abbey Road. We took no, took no votes and made no motions. No motions were made and no votes were taken, rather.
There you go.
And we adjourned at, I believe it was like 7:56.
No, we had to run upstairs.
6:56. 6:56. Sorry about that. It's getting late.
Okay, Walter.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, we're adjourned.